Yes.
Joanne Eaton, Paul Sargent here, Bob McCool.
Here.
Robert Momarts.
Here.
Rochelle Rittmuster.
Here.
Tom Rickert.
Present.
Jim Sawtill.
Here.
Assistant Town Manager Bert Moiski.
Here.
Trudy Liz Cross.
Here.
Brian Redbox.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome our newest Commissioner, Jim Sawtill. Welcome to the Commission.
Thank you.
Good to have you here.
Thanks.
Next item on our agenda is appointment of a vice chairperson. Commissioner Prestesator has retired from his position as vice chairperson, so we need to elect a new vice chairperson. I'm sure you've all been thinking about this since the agenda came out. Anyone who want to make a motion? Don't all jump at once.
I'd have to do it. I'll throw my add in.
Our nominee is to McCool.
Yes, second.
We have a nomination for Commissioner McCool by Commissioner Momarts and a second by Commissioner Rickert. All those in favor? Opposed? Passage unanimous.
You're going to be here for all the meetings, though, anyway. That's right. Plan it, go.
Next on our agenda is public comment on consent agenda and non-agenda items. Anyone in the public wish to speak on consent agenda or non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is the approval of the October 16th, 2012 minutes.
One typo. One typo, sorry. It's on page four where Commissioner Folsom said he doesn't feel this makes sense. You put in "since" instead of "since."
Sometimes it means "since."
They picked up on the check.
Anyone else have any questions, comments about the minutes? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Rittmuster, second by Commissioner Momarts. All those in favor? Commissioner Rickert abstained. Okay. Next on our agenda is discussion of the transportation plan.
Good evening. My name is Alex Aronella. I'm Director of Public Works and Utilities. I have two others with me tonight. Lisa Ritchie was a Public Works intern last summer that helped me draft the plan. Now she's a full-time management analyst. And Chris McGrannahan is with LSC Transportation Consultants. That'll be presenting a portion of tonight's presentation. So why are we here? I think the Planning Commission has seen a summary of the transportation plan in a comprehensive plan, and we were not able to present the full plan to the Commission, but we did invite the Commission to the Board's work session on October 8th. And if any of you were there, the Board at that time felt that there was a lot of issues with transportation plan, and they really wanted this to go through a vetting process with the public, with Planning Commission, to get as much public input as possible. So basically, told us to start over. We pulled out everything that was associated with transportation plan, other than the policies from the comprehensive plan. And so the Board's going to adopt the comprehensive plan without the transportation plan being part of it, but the goals and policies of the transportation plan will be in it. So we're kind of starting from scratch, and we'll present to you the public process that we have lined up. But we've been listening. We've had a number of comments because the draft has been out. We've got some comments back from Planning Commission members, from Town Board, from others. So as we get a comment and we're able to incorporate it, so the document you have in front of you is a little different from maybe the one you received. I think you got a document before the Board work session. Or if you came to a Board work session, you might have picked up a document. So we revised it since October, and I'm going to turn it over to Lisa to kind of tell you what's changed since the October draft and summarize some of the comments we heard from the Board and how we're moving forward with the public review process.
Thank you. Good evening, Lisa Ritchie, Town Staff.
Are you ready?
I am ready. Thank you. Some of the changes that we have occurred, we have taken into consideration at this point. The Town Board wanted to see an additional mention of neighborhood electric vehicles in our first transportation policy. That has been added. We'll discuss more specifically what those are later in our presentation. Additionally, we have revised Policy 8.1.8 regarding the Northwest Corridor. Language has been revised to be more generic regarding whatever transportation improvements may come through the Northwest Corridor, and it has been revised to be more specific regarding the Town of Superior's interaction and participation in that process. Regional population numbers have been revised to reflect more current data. The land use data, when we developed the transportation plan, traffic projections were created based on the future anticipated land use. As you may be aware, some of these land uses have been changing throughout the comprehensive plan process over the last few weeks. We're doing our best to keep apprised of the Town Board's direction of current or projected land uses and updating our traffic projections based on those. The three specific areas that are still kind of being determined through the comp plan process are Opportunity Area 5, the Anderson property. Currently, as it stands right now, the draft comprehensive plan has it as residential and non-residential mixed uses with a buffer along 36, consistent with existing development to the south and to the west of that property. Sahara's property, Opportunity Area 6, is currently in the comp plan draft, a mix of residential, specifically small patio homes or senior living, as well as office and commercial. And then Opportunity Area 7, the Richmond property, is consistent with the 2006 plan, which was commercial on the south half near Colton Road and office on the north half. An additional change that we have made since the last version was released was Coal Creek Drive through original Superior has been reclassified as a local street, and we have revised the traffic projections based on the land use changes. The concerns or the issues that the Town Board at this point has expressed that they would like more time to examine are the McAsland Corridor vision. Chris McGrannahan will speak more specifically regarding some of those options for you. They also would like to look at the appropriateness of the existing speed limits through town, as well as the development of any neighborhood electric vehicle regulations, as well as their largest concern, which was that this definitely needed to go through the public process and get more public feedback and vetting and input. We, at this point, Town Staff has developed kind of a timeline of what we are anticipating to occur for the transportation process. Every month, we will be putting articles in the newsletter, an announcement of meetings and progress on the town website, the CAC and eBlast. And throughout this, every month, the Town Staff, we will be updating and revising this plan to reflect any inputs and feedback and changes that are desired. In December, obviously, the transportation plan is before you this evening to review and get your feedback. In January, we're anticipating a community meeting to share what we have developed with the public, as well as to gain feedback from them. We're also anticipating a Transportation and Safety Committee meeting to review the draft plan, as well as the Survey Monkey for the public to respond with any of their comments. February, we'll have an additional Transportation and Safety Committee meeting showing any revised or any revisions that have occurred, and then bring the plan before you again at that point and let you see where we are and gain more feedback. In March, we anticipate a Town Board work session to apprise them of the status of the plan at that time that incorporates your feedback, Transportation and Safety Committee feedback, as well as public feedback. And in April, we are hoping for adoption of the transportation plan.
Thanks, Lisa. So I'm just going to give you an overview of the plan, what's in the document, and then we're going to focus on some of the key areas. Transportation plan, hopefully aligns with the goals and the outcomes of the comprehensive plan update. We had a number of meetings this summer, so we've incorporated some of that feedback. Hopefully, we're going to have additional feedback as we go through this process that Lisa described. Here's the goal for the overall transportation goal is to develop a multimodal transportation system to efficiently meet the local and regional transportation needs of residents and businesses in a safe, convenient, and efficient manner while minimizing negative environmental and community impacts. That's the overall goal. We start with the existing system. Some of the key issues, obviously, US 36 is a major connector between Boulder area and Denver area and passes through Superior, and we have one access point in Superior and a nearby access point at Interlap, and then the two interchanges on either side. McAsland Boulevard is the main arterial in Superior, but it also is a major north-south arterial for the whole corridor because the only way to get north, south, to the west is State Highway 93 and Wadsworth. Those are the only two routes with any kind of continuity. All the other routes don't really have it. So we don't have that standard mile arterial grid pattern that you see throughout the rest of the metro area. So we get a lot of through traffic ending on McAsland because we don't have the dense arterial network that other areas of the metro area have. You probably read this better in your packet, but some of the traffic volumes in the area on McAsland, they range from about 8,400 on the south end near State Highway 128 to as high as 30,000 north of McAsland. On Colton Road, they range from 4,500 on the west end to about 12,000 on the east end. Rock Creek Parkway has 7,500 to 8,800 on the south end, and 88th Street has 8,500. So those are the volumes, and then we'll show you some regional projections in a minute. The plan, this is the actual plan that was included originally in the comp plan. We pulled that out to go through this process. Eventually, this, we're going to have that summary document of the transportation plan become part of the comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan will be amended after this process is over to incorporate the summary documents, probably this particular map, and then several of the other main documents from this plan into the comprehensive plan. We had a transit facilities map as well with, you know, routes that run along the US 36, the local 228 route that serves Superior and some of the other routes in nearby areas. The trails map is also part of the plan, and it's also included in the parks and rec portion of the plan. We start, we have regional growth, and we changed this table a little bit to update the population forecast for Superior. Depending on the level of residential development, we get into Town Center, we could have as many as 16,783 people at full buildout, and then employment could increase by 48%, 49% again if we get the higher end of the Town Center development. This map actually incorporates the latest thinking from the Town Board. Again, that's a work in progress. We're kind of in between that. They had a hearing, which was wiped out last week, the end of it with a power failure. So they were meeting then on December 10th to finalize, hopefully adopt the plan, and we would come back and include whatever changes they would have in land uses, incorporate that back into the plan before we go out to the public. So what we did here, there's a number of questions about the projections and how they relate to existing traffic, and there were some instances where the 2035 projection was actually lower than existing traffic. So we cleared some of those out, and actually what we did with the traffic forecast is start with the existing traffic volume and then look at traffic that would be generated by all the vacant parcels with the development that's been proposed for the comprehensive plan. And we distributed that traffic on our network, and then we had some minor growth in through traffic on McAsland. I think we added 2,000 trips per day that would go through the McAsland Corridor and 1,000 or so on Marshall that are some through traffic. So we have existing traffic plus new development traffic plus some minor growth in through traffic to get to these projections. So these are a little bit lower than some ones you saw before, and it does reflect our belief that with some of the traffic calming and medias and lower design speeds on McAsland, it would not be as attractive a route for through traffic to use in the future. Before, I think we had projections of upwards of 20,000 vehicles per day. We're forecasting now about 13,000 towards the south end of McAsland, about 29,000 north of Rock Creek Parkway, and upwards of 56,000 as you get towards the interchange. Rock Creek Parkway would go increase, you know, from about 7,500 now to about 10,700 here. The Marshall Road Extension through the Town Center would have about 15,000 up at the north end as it gets into Coal Creek. Coal Creek would increase a little bit, but only until about 4,400 in that particular So based on those projections, you know, we developed the plan basically with no change in lanes. We included all the roads that you've discussed through the Town Center process. That road system included on the plan. One thing we haven't included is there's a through connection from the Marshall Road Extension over to 88th. We do show with the Anderson property, an access point over here. Whether that's going to be a through connection, I think that's a part of the site design process as that particular property goes through the process. We anticipate maybe a backdoor connection to this property and not a through connection where you can take some of the through traffic and go through that property. And again, that's something that needs to be vetted out through the public process for that particular property. Okay, we want to focus on four areas that are key components of the plan. US 36 improvements, including interchange, roundabouts that are fairly controversial, and McAsland Corridor vision and neighborhood electric vehicles. You've seen all this. I think we've had several presentations about the DDI concept. As you recall, what the US 36 managed lane process, you're aware of the construction that's ongoing now. The plan is to add a lane in each direction in the center for managed lanes that would be controlled either by tolls or use of HOB. There has been some delay getting that project off the ground, Phase II that project off the ground because the issue has been should that managed lane be free for HOB 2 people versus HOB 3 people? And it looks like it may be HOB 3. So if you were two people in a car, you'd have to pay a toll, and if you were a single occupant, you'd have to pay a toll. So there's been negotiations with that particular issue that's held up getting that out to the design build team so we can get proposals back. But we've been involved in the process. We've gotten CDOT to include our concept for McAsland interchange in the Phase II base project, so it's going to be part of that. We're negotiating IGA agreements with CDOT and with Louisville and RTD to pay for the improvements, who pays what. So this is the concept that we had presented to you a number of times. The diverging diamond concept takes traffic and crosses over at a crossover intersection, puts it on the opposite side going over the bridge, and then you have a free left going on to US 36. So you end up with free lefts, free rights, and you only have two intersections that are two-phase intersections. So hopefully that decreases the delay through the interchange area. We've also had a unique concept by putting pedestrians in the middle, and I think the Planning Commission commented on this way back when they thought pedestrians should be in the middle rather than the outside. You guys want out? We had a number of discussions vetted this through a national board of experts. We called in two outside experts with CDOT and our design team to talk about geometrics and the angles and the intersections and where pedestrians should go, and the recommendation was to put pedestrians on the middle, which I think you guys had to talk about and made that recommendation. So pedestrians will end up in the center area. To make this a dramatic area, we're going to have what's called the basket handle approach, where we have an architectural feature that really isn't, these trusses are supported off the bridge, so they're not adding weight to the bridge. They're off the bridge, they're supported, but they kind of mimic the pedestrian arch of the pedestrian crossing in place now. So you have two of those crossings. We felt this would be a dramatic statement for the interchange, plus provide a kind of enclosed environment for pedestrians. Another key component is that we're adding bike lanes. Right now, if you tried to take a bike across that interchange, we don't have room for bikes. You go up on the sidewalk and you have a very narrow area, or you take your life in your hands in a travel lane. So we're providing bike lanes in the center of the bridge. So that, and then as we went along, we said, well, can we do something about pedestrians and try to connect Town Center with the BRT station? This has been a vision of Fred Fox. He knew, thought we needed an underpass at some point. So we, and in fact, the mayor wanted the underpass to kind of cut across Marshall-McAsland intersection, but we have detention ponds on both sides, so you'd be walking underwater if you put it there. So we did find a location where we could, where the grades work because you're going up the bridge, and if you know where, behind brakes plus, you're down below. So there's some grade differential between the rove on McAsland and where we could daylight the pedestrian underpass. So we asked CDOT to include this as well, and they were going to include this as an alternate. So we'll get a specific price for this underpass, and when we get that, we'll decide, well, you know, is that worth pursuing? And we've actually budgeted a million dollars, next year's budget, for the underpass and the connections. We haven't quite worked out how do we connect the underpass, we can connect it here to the existing walk that goes to the BRT station. On this side, we still have some issues on how do we get it behind Old Chicago. Is that feasible? Do we need to bring it down? Or do we need to come down here? So we haven't worked those out. We're waiting to see if this is even feasible and the price is right, and then we can go and design the other connections. I wanted to show this just to show you some of the geometry of the underpass. It's going to be from wall to wall about 18 feet and about 10 feet high. So we're trying to make it wide enough so it feels open and lighted. It will be about 150 feet long. And to put that in perspective, if you've been under the underpass on Rock Creek Parkway near McAsland, that's about 140 feet long. So it's about the length of that. That's kind of, that's more open because the drainage way goes through there, but it's about that length. So we've been working, so the proposal was to, you know, put the underpass right through here. This ramp gets moved, and so we can connect it to the bike, the sidewalk system. So now, what also came up, Louisville made a proposal, and they got into the base bid for US 36 to put an underpass up here where there's a ditch crossing. They had to replace that ditch crossing, so it was very economical now to put in an underpass of US 36 at that point. So it's up towards Davidson Mesa in this area. So the bike path, bikeway will be built on the north side coming down here, and then it's going to swing over to Dillon Road. So we felt with that underpass, there was an opportunity to either connect to Marshall or build a trail between Marshall and Turnpike to the Park and Ride, somehow get through the Park and Ride and connect up with the underpass, and then if we get through behind Old Chicago, connect up to Coal Creek, the Coal Creek Trail. And in fact, the county saw that alignment, saw that concept, and they thought it was much better than having the trail on the north side. But we don't want to, Louisville has their plan, and we don't want to jeopardize their plan, so we haven't said that this should be the Boulder, the US 36 bikeway. But we will end up, if we get the underpass, probably going to seek funding through Dr. Cog or other sources to build the connections, and we call it the Star to Star Route. Here's the underpass at Davidson Mesa. Here's the Park and Ride, and here's the underpass. So we have the underpass of McAsland. This is, we can make that connection fairly easily, although it'd be pretty expensive if we get to here. So building this section of the trail, we don't have funding for that, but we believe that'll be a good, once we get all these pieces in place, that'll be a missing link, and we hopefully get some funding for that. We've incorporated that Star to Star Trail in the transportation, the trails map. You can see up here, there's the underpass, and we've included that Star to Star path as a featured trail connection, as well as the US 36 bikeway on the map, and connections that you've seen connecting from the Town Center to the US 36 bikeway. Also during this process, another study started, and it's called the First and Final Mile Study. And it's, you know, US 36 Leaning Solutions, they're kind of sponsoring that, they got funding for it, and it's basically looking at what can you do to get people to and from the BRT stations? You know, we're going to have good, great transit service along US 36 because of the managed lanes. So how do you get people, to get people to use that service, how do we bridge the gap between where they're living and working and the BRT station? So the study looked at all BRT stations up along the corridor, both in the specific what's going on in each service and then in the corridor, what can we do corridor-wide to promote people using, getting on BRT and bridging the gap on that first and final mile. So some of the corridor priorities, up and down the corridor, is to provide bike and bus parking at the Park and Rides. So as you know, we have bike lockers at some of the stations. There are, people don't know if they're being used, they're not very used. I don't know if you see these bike cages? There's two or three in Boulder County, and so that's the concept that we'll employ here. We have a bike cage, you have a car access. They can, this cage can handle a lot more bikes than the bike lockers can, and they're secure, you know, they're covered. So they're playing on implementing those at each of the BRT stations. They're looking at first and final mile equal passes. If you take a mile radius around the BRT stations, is there a way of offering equal passes, everybody live and work around those stations? Looking at wayfinding signage destinations, looking at private car sharing like EGO, maybe having EGO cars stationed at the BRT stations, taxi stations, the B-cycle, have you seen those in Boulder? Maybe have B-cycle stations at each of the BRTs. First and final mile, well, the subsidized memberships to those bicycles. And then line use review and develop our proposals. We're not wild about that, having someone else review our proposals, but they put that in. So those are corridor-wide strategies. These are some of the ones that are more specific to our area. We haven't really included any of these yet in the plan. I'll show you ones that we have included, but these are some of the ones that are coming out. The recommendations just coming out and going through the public process and so forth. So we have, for example, the call and ride service that we had in Louisville and Superior one time was discontinued. So that's an easy way to, you know, let's reinstitute that service. And should that be locally funded, they're thinking about maybe Louisville and Superior pulling up or finding other source to reinstitute that service. Emploira Base Shuttle Services, getting a transportation coordinator for the commercial and employment areas in Centennial Valley and Spirit Marketplace. Priority pickup and drop-off locations at the BRT stations. Louisville Superior Transportation Coordinator for the two communities. Mini transportation hubs, and I think what that, we're talking about there, maybe the priority stations. You know, my concept, my feeling is with the managed lanes, they're fine for buses and with BRT stations, but for van pools and car pools, how do you get to the, how do you, you know, accommodate those people? So maybe having a mini hub in Louisville, mini hub in Superior where people can meet to carpool or van pool and then get on the managed lane and go on your way. ADA bike ramps. This is, this came out of the, in fact, that we, we have the pedestrian bridge, but we don't have a good way for bikes to go off that pedestrian bridge. And we heard it here, I think, in the, at the Town Board hearing, that people say, you know, if we just get, be able to get a ramp up to that pedestrian bridge, then you can use it. So that's a recommendation coming out of this study. And then wayfinding to the perimeter roads. And then wayfinding to the perimeter roads around, so you know how to get to the BRT station. All right, here's, here are strategies that we already incorporated in the plan. We've had, had these, been thinking about that, and that's connections between the town center and the US 36 bikeway. Connection along the west side of McCaslin from essentially here up the hill to key equipment, that area. The bike path underpass of McCaslin, and then connections between McCaslin Underpass and Cold Creek Trail. So that final one, you know, we don't have funding for that, but we're having other people kind of join on the bandwagon promoting that particular concept. Okay, now moving on to something a little more controversial. Roundabouts, and here's my roundabout spiel, if you weren't here at the town board meeting. But I wanted to provide some education for why are we doing roundabouts? Superior's kind of been in the vanguard of roundabouts for the last decade or so. We had the one built out in Superior Marketplace, and then we built the one at 88th and Rock Creek Parkway, and then one in McCaslin and Colton. I've been, before I came here, I was a transportation consultant, and I was probably the biggest proponent of roundabouts in the state of Colorado. The state has probably more roundabouts than hardly any other state. And so I promoted roundabouts, and you'll find out why. So I'm going to talk about what makes them a roundabout, what are the advantages of roundabouts, how safe are they, and should Superior construct additional roundabouts? And real, some of the key principles for roundabout design are yield on entry. The vehicles entering the roundabout must yield to the vehicles circulating around the roundabout. That's, that's different. It's not stop control, it's not merging. If you remember, some of the large roundabouts, they weren't called, they were traffic circles back east. If you've been back east, they had some big ones, and they operated on the merge principle. So these high-speed merges, and yeah, and so you come in and then you merge in and merge out at high speeds. So they were dangerous, there were a lot of accidents, and that's not the principle to operate with the modern roundabouts. Modern roundabouts are smaller, they're compact, and they have the yield on entry. They're designed for slow speeds, not high speeds. And the, they have deflection at the entry points, and actually deflection, if you know this on on Colton, as you, as you come down the hill on McCaslin coming to Colton, we have some deflection coming into the roundabout. So we're slowing vehicles into the roundabout to make sure that they get to the proper speed that we want. We want them to going 15 to 25 miles an hour through the roundabout. And then the other main concept is the pedestrian refuge, provided refuge for pedestrians to, to be able to have vehicles yield to them crossing the roundabout. So we put the pedestrian crossing behind the vehicle. So you'll be, yielding vehicles up here, and you have a couple of vehicles back, we put the pedestrian refuge. We do that for two, two reasons. One, when you're, when you're yielding, you're looking, you're looking at the oncoming traffic. We don't want pedestrians crossing in front of a vehicle that's about to enter the roundabout. We want them behind and have a yield point. The other reason is it's a shorter crossing distance at that point because you don't have the curve, the curve radius to deal with. So that's why we put the pedestrian refuge back away from the entry point. So there, roundabouts are safer, more efficient, more aesthetically pleasing, lower energy consumption, lower vehicle emissions, and lower maintenance costs. I'll go through some of these things, especially on, on safety. Why are roundabouts safer? And I wouldn't be up here promoting roundabouts, and I've made this presentation dozens of times because I believe they are safer. And the reason why, because they have fewer conflict points for vehicles, cyclists, and pedestrians, and that's, and they have lower speeds through the vehicles so that the, they have low angle, low speed conflict points, which reduce the severity of any collisions that do occur. And the pedestrian crossing distance is shorter and requires looking only in one direction by pedestrians. So let's take a typical four-way intersection and look at the conflict points. And there's 32 conflict points, and some of these are pretty high-speed. If you think about a vehicle that's turning left, trying to, this is in a permitted condition, and vehicle going through, this, if this vehicle's going at a high speed, that's pretty high-speed T-bone type of collision. Very dangerous, and injuries going to result from that. High angle and high energy. So what's, what if we took all those middle conflict points out and make a roundabout? We result with just eight conflict points, and the conflict points are the, the entry vehicle maybe colliding with the circulating vehicle, and you may have a conflict point here where you have a yielding vehicle and a vehicle coming up behind and running into that, that vehicle. These are both very low speed, and this one is very low angle, you know, it's kind of glance and blow. So you have low speed, low angle conflict points. Look at pedestrians, and you think pedestrians are safe, especially at singleized intersections, yet that's why you have the traffic signal, because you're going to separate the, the conflict situations. Well, you don't really, if you look at, at pedestrians crossing, pedestrian, when the light turns green for this movement and pedestrians can go, well, you have left turners and you have right turners. They both have the right to be at this point. The right turner, right on red, left turner, you know, he's clear his conflict point. So they both have the right to be there. It's a conflict point, whether you have a traffic signal or not, that's a conflict point. So when you have a roundabout, you only reduce the 24 pedestrian vehicle conflict points to eight. And, and this particular situation, you're looking once, you're only crossing one lane of traffic, one-way direction traffic, as you cross from one side to the other, cross one, get to the pedestrian refuge, and cross the other. So what are the accident statistics for roundabouts, and are they safe? Well, in this particular study, it was described, they looked at 55 intersections where they, that were converted from typical four-way intersections to roundabouts. They had accident data that was, collected two years before the conversion was made, and then they collected for two years afterwards, and they compared the accident data before the roundabout and after. In this case, at these 55 intersections, there were 1,122 accidents beforehand in those two-year period and afterward, and went down to 726. Thirty-five percent decrease in accidents. But more importantly, the, the injury accidents, the severe accidents, went down from 296 to 72. That's a 76 percent decrease in injury accidents. So not only overall accidents go down, but the injuries, the severe ones, went down even more. Okay. I want to give you an example closer to home. I was City Golden's traffic consultant for a number of years, and I was involved in a project in Golden where we had a corridor project that was about a mile, three quarters mile long, was a strip commercial area, and the, the city was considering whether to do improvements and whether roundabouts should be part of that solution. They did go ahead and implement four roundabouts. It was a retail commercial corridor, and there were high school and middle schools within a quarter mile, half a mile from this, these areas. So these are the roundabouts that were implemented. That used to be a traffic signal. There was, this was uncontrolled, and this was a traffic signal, and that was a traffic signal. This is King Supers, they were a shopping center that was coming in, and they were going to put the fourth, the fourth leg, and they were trying to decide whether to put that roundabout in. King Supers, at that time, this was in the late 90s, said, we have 600 stores in Colorado, we don't have a roundabout near one of them, we're not going to put a roundabout there. And so the city council were convinced of roundabouts with the solution, and I said, look, we'll put it in, if you don't meet your sales projections in the first year, we'll take it out. It's still there. So King Supers was convinced, and I think there are other roundabouts now near King Supers. Strip corridor. Also, they did implement some access control. There are just a painted median, so they did put medians throughout that corridor. Pizza Hut, McDonald's, veterinarian clinic, here's one of the critical areas, how is the vet clinic going to get all the horse trailers around the roundabout? But the reason I bring this up, because we monitored traffic data, accident data over a nine-year period before and after, to see what the effect of the roundabouts in a corridor, roundabouts in series. And so in the three years prior to installing the roundabouts, there were 360 accidents in that, you know, half mile, three-quarter mile stretch, because you had, you had all these driveways, and you had high speeds and so forth. And the six years after, that's double the time period, you're only 150 accidents. The traffic volumes went up a little bit, so the accident rate went down 85 percent, just total accidents. But more importantly, 31 injury accidents before, three afterwards. So here we had almost 10 a year, now we're having one every two years. So 96 percent reduction in accidents. So to me, this is why I'm on my soapbox and I go around. I've seen roundabouts work from a, from a safety standpoint. Coincidentally enough on that one, several years later, there's another project near, Golden High School is just near this corridor, and they were going to rebuild Golden High School, tear it down, build a whole new school, they're going to change their access points. So the staff said, maybe we should put a roundabout at the main entrance to the school. Well, we had different city council, some of them were, you know, roundabout naysayers, you know, it's really close, well, they put this roundabout in, and they said, well, let's go ask the public, let's see what the public says. So they went through the public process, and they presented, here's the roundabout, here's the traffic signal, which one do you prefer? And they had four or five hundred people go through the open houses, and it was about a two to one vote in favor of the roundabouts. So there's still naysayers out there, and that's probably why you get feedback. We don't like these roundabouts, but there are a lot of people that do. And Golden's case, they built another roundabout based on that public input. Now, are traffic lights safer? I just showed you, roundabouts are safer. Well, here's a study in Colorado about traffic signals. And it was a study where they, they found 112 signals that were installed during this period of time, and they had accident data of three years prior to the traffic signal going in and three years after it going in. And so the results were, hey, it was, did pretty good with fatalities, eight, went down at 50 percent. We're still killing people with traffic signals, we're still killing people. Sorry. Injuries, up 52 percent. Property damage, up 81 percent. pedestrians are safer, up 25 percent. So you don't put in traffic signals to make, make intersections safer. If you want to make intersections safer, it's not the traffic signal works, it's the So other, other summaries, you know, from a safety standpoint, you know, travel speeds are generally reduced. In almost all cases, the total number of crashes is reduced when a conventional intersection is replaced by a roundabout. And, you know, if we're talking about like the town center, if a new intersection's going to go in, you can expect lower accidents with a roundabout than with a traffic signal. Again, I see these accidents over at Marshall-McCaslin. I'm not saying that should be a candidate because it's probably too much traffic, but we probably have one serious accident every two or three months, just one the other day. Some other benefits, I skipped ones. Better operations. Now, we talk about level of service. So normally with the same traffic volumes, roundabouts provide the same or better levels of service, lower delays. And in fact, for 20 to 22 hours a day, when you don't have the typical high commuting peak hours, it'll be better levels of service than a level of service A or B. Can you remember that?
Delays, is it 20 seconds or 15 seconds? What is it?
So level of service is defined by delay, and you look at the, the seconds of delay, delay per vehicle, and you translate that into a letter grade. For nighttime periods, when there's hardly any traffic, it's free-flowing. You come up to a roundabout, you, you know, you just, you go, you go through. For pedestrians, we're going to talk about pedestrians getting across, whether it's harder or safer. This is a controversial issue. But from a delay standpoint, you have level of service A or B 24 hours a day, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days. We've looked at the delays, we have video of Colton Roundabout, there was just a study that was done in Minnesota where they videotaped two roundabouts for a month to look at what the delays were for pedestrians, whether, looked at the, the interactions between vehicles and pedestrians. The delay for pedestrians, when you didn't have vehicle, when you had vehicles in the roundabout, the average delay was four or five seconds for the pedestrian. And that's the level of service at A or, A or B. If you think of the typical traffic signal, you go up and you probably wait 30 seconds to 60 seconds to cross a traffic, traffic singleized intersection. So less delay, whether they're safe or not is a very controversial subject. In this particular study, they looked at tens and thousands of vehicle and pedestrian interactions. They're trying to find some problems. They only found three instances out of all these interactions of anything that was even remotely a close call. So, I mean, people look at, and they've watched these things, and yet, you know, people think there's a safety issue with pedestrians going across. Now, the, the big issue with roundabouts are people with disabilities, you know, blind people, and especially at multi-lane entries, like on Rock Creek Parkway where we have two lanes and you have to cross two lanes, and the issue is there, one vehicle may yield for the, for the blind person, the next vehicle may not, and the blind person cannot see them. So that's been an issue in the, in the traffic engineering community that we have to face, and, and we may have to singleize multi-lane approach to provide a higher level of protection. Just going through the environmental effects, because you're not sitting there eyeing like you would at a singleized intersection, you're going to have lower emissions and lower fuel consumption. The operation maintenance costs for each traffic signal cost me about $3,000 a year to maintain and operate a traffic signal. You don't have those costs with a roundabout. On the other hand, you do have the landscaping costs that you have to maintain. You have to maintain the landscaping, so there is some additional cost for that. Traffic calming, and now again, talking about McCaslin, if we want to slow the traffic down, if you, if you know McCaslin and Colton, you don't go flying into that roundabout. You know you have to stop, so you start coasting down. When you go down the hill, you start coasting and you're going to, you know, I think there's about a quarter mile in the vicinity of the roundabout where you're not doing 55 miles an hour, you're going at the speed limit. So you're going to have some traffic calming effect in the area of the roundabout. And of course, aesthetics is a big improvement over a singleized intersection. So these are the roundabouts that we proposed in the plan. We've had some comments from board members. I don't think we have a majority, but we had some comments from board members. Do we really want roundabouts on McCaslin? And that's an issue. We want something back from, from you and from the public. So these are the roundabouts proposed on McCaslin. And now, I'm going to turn around because I'm losing my voice. Chris McGrathahan is going to give you a little presentation on McCaslin vision.
Thank you, Alex. I am Chris McGrathahan with LSC. And this is kind of the opening slide for the McCaslin Boulevard corridor vision, so you can, just so we're all oriented, we all know where we are. This is the Rock Creek Parkway intersection, so off to the left is US 36 and where we are tonight. As you go south, you go around the curves near the ridge, so this is High Plains, this will be Christiansen, and then as you travel down, you end up at the roundabout at Colton Road, and then south to the Indiana Connection, and then off to the, off to the right here would be, let's see, Highway 128. So the main focus of the corridor vision for McCaslin was from Rock Creek Parkway on the north, down to Indiana Avenue on the south. As you all know, that roadway today is posted at 45 miles per hour, and it can be a challenge to keep your speed at 45 miles per hour. It's pretty wide open, there's not a lot of access. So one of the visions we thought was, as you travel from the more manicured, maintained, you know, kind of the, the theme of Rock Creek Parkway with the landscaping and the, you know, the irrigated landscaping, it looks nice, it looks more urban. Down in this area, we have more of a rural native grasses type of landscaping or habitat. So the idea was, how do we get traffic to be closer to a 40 mile per hour design speed or posted speed in this area and still maintain traffic movements, move pedestrians, things of that nature? So the first thing we did is we worked with the planning group, John Landerman, he was on our team with Alex and Lisa and I and some other folks, and he came up with this concept diagram, which all we were doing at this was to identify the riparian areas, the crossings where McCaslin crosses, these riparian corridors, whether it's structures or bridges. These blue areas are meant to denote the view opportunities, where the view opens up, or in some areas where it closes in. These, this shaded area is more developed areas, so These shaded areas are more developed areas, so this shows a lot of the undeveloped open space area in the county down in this area. So we started with this and said, what are some of the opportunities we have here? So we went, this is the north end of the corridor. So what you see here is Alex mentioned a future roundabout at Rock Creek Parkway and McCaslin, that's what this is here. What we show is this roundabout would blend into the existing cross section to the north, so this would look more like your landscaped median, it looks more like an urban area, similar to what you have today. But as you transition south from Rock Creek Parkway, we would have this little island that Alex showed on the roundabouts for pedestrian refuges would actually be extended quite a distance to provide more, the opportunity for more landscaping and transition into a more native area. We thought it would be important because of the severe grades, there's a lot of embankment here, the road's actually quite a bit above the residential area to the east here. So the idea was, we would more or less maintain what we have among these two curves and then start to widen back out at the ridge or High Plains here, potentially a traffic signal here in the future could be a roundabout, but mostly a traffic signal. And then that median continues down to Christensen. That's what we talked about, is potentially a roundabout, but for now, we're just showing as a conventional intersection. And then as we go south of Christensen, we start to get a lot more dramatic, try to open things up quite a bit and make the road more opened up and feel more, get more of a rural flair, but also have, do things to help keep the traffic low, the traffic speeds low. For instance, this, as we go south of Christensen, we're showing the southbound traffic and the northbound traffic being separated by anywhere from 20 to 100 feet. So we have a more of a, looks like two one-way streets almost with landscaping in the middle here. It could be, some areas it could be more densely treed or landscaped, other areas maybe more native grasses, more open. So as we transition south or move to the south, this is the existing roundabout at Colton, so we would maintain this width. What this does is a couple of things. One, it, these curves actually help slow traffic down because we can design these curves for, so that we can have a 40 mile per hour posted speed and people are more likely to drive that fast because of the curvature. And that feeds right into the roundabout that's there today. Same thing northbound, a little bit of curvature here. What these, what this does is it allows us to separate the two directions of travel, slow speeds down, do some nice landscaping in the middle here. The further south we go, the more native that would look, the further north we go, the more manicured it would look. One thing that it does do though, a few of these side roads, like this, for this for instance, ends up being a right in, right out because there's no crossing here. That shouldn't be a problem with the roundabout here. Folks that are coming from the north can come around the roundabout and go right in or they can come out over the access point over here. So we got the existing roundabout at Colton. Go south, similar concept, we widen the road back out. This median here would be more native landscaping. The one thing that this concept would do is currently this intersection is a right in, right out, and this intersection is a full movement, which means you can make all the turning movements you want there. This concept would require that to be flip-flopped, so this would become the full movement intersection and this would be a right in, right out. That seems to work fairly well because these two roads actually connect just to the east, so that shouldn't be a big issue. As we go further south, this is the depressed area where the residential and then the undeveloped areas on this side are both quite a bit higher than McCaslin. So we maintain a narrower median through here because we don't want to get in, cutting into those slopes too much. And then we approached the southern end of our study area, which shows a single lane roundabout Indiana that would be, it could be landscaped in such a way that it would look more native for vegetation. It also is kind of the end of the corridor, so then you would proceed up the hill towards 128, which Alex showed, could potentially be a roundabout someday, but it was beyond the visioning of this, the limits of this study. So the idea is this would maintain more or less as it is for the time being. What this shows is just some, the planning group, John Lander, John Lander put these together. This is just to kind of give an idea of what some of the areas might look like. This would be an area where we have the divided, the large median but more native grasses in the middle. So you have, say, northbound traffic here, southbound traffic here. This could be some landscape trees to kind of buffer the residential area, both sight buffering and noise buffering. This would be for what areas where we have a nice view to the west, so people driving along here can maintain those nice views. This may be what the area around the ridge looks like, where you have the landforms and the large slope to the south, to the east. So this would be more like the existing, what's out there now by the ridge. This could be the area, it's a similar, this concept is more open, this would be a more closed cross section. So you have the northbound traffic here, the southbound traffic here, but in this case you have landscaping with trees and things, so it looks like a little bit more of a corridor, it kind of closes things in a little bit, makes it look a little more, made a little more influences, maybe a slower speed. These could be intermixed with something like this so that the view isn't constant, it kind of comes and goes and makes it a little more interesting, or so the landscape architects tells us. This is just a little detail, just some snapshots of the corridor in a little more detail. This shows where we have some sparse tree on the east and some wide open to the west, so you can reserve these views up to the front range there. This would be one of those areas where we separate the two directions of travel and we have intermittent plantings where we have no view through this area and then an open view followed by, you know, intermittent views and no views to keep it interesting. And some buffering here between the homes and McCaslin alignment. This would be one of, another one of those areas where rather than doing the intermittent like we have here, we would have some tree clustering, it'd look something like this. These are blowups of the two proposed roundabouts in our study corridor. This one is Rock Creek Parkway, McCaslin, where the existing signal is. So this landscaping would be more consistent with what you see on Rock Creek Parkway to the east or McCaslin to the north. And then this intersection is the existing Colton-Mccaslin roundabout with some additional landscaping that the landscape architect felt would enhance what we have out there. And it also shows departing north from this roundabout where we split the two directions of travel, beginning of that split. And then these two concepts are two proposed roundabouts on Rock Creek Parkway. This one is Rock Creek Parkway and Pittkin Avenue, not signalized today, but at some point in the future could warrant a signal. This is a similar, Alex just said, this would provide opportunities for pedestrians to get across Rock Creek Parkway a little easier. Right now, I believe there's a pit crossing here that's, can be a little difficult at times. So a roundabout here provides a lot of opportunity. This is further southeast on Rock Creek Parkway, this is Rock Creek Parkway and Coal Creek Drive, with the connection shown in the transportation plan up to the north, up to the back of the town center. This could theoretically warrant a signal someday too, so a roundabout here was considered as well. The landscaping here, again, both of these would, the landscaping would be intended to match the character and the theme of what's on Rock Creek Parkway today. And I believe, yeah, that's awesome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, this segment is really not discussed in the plan, but we're bringing it back. I think the planning commission discussed the, some options for the ridge and High Plains Avenue and McCaslin. And we presented some options for pedestrian crossing. Real issue here is that we had, this segment of McCaslin from Colton up to Rock Creek Parkway is over a mile in length and there's no protective way to, for pedestrians to cross McCaslin that whole stretch. And particularly for the residents of the ridge who may want to go across to Rock Creek Ranch Development, there's no Safeway for them to go without running and taking their lives in the hands. So they've been petitioning for a number of years to do something to provide a pedestrian crossing. So we developed several options and we narrowed them down. We had three that we presented to the planning commission, traffic and safety committee. And we thought we had this resolve, but the board said, well, this really should be part of the transportation planning process, that we want this to be vetted through the process and get it put from the community on it. So this particular option was to put an at-grade pedestrian crossing, pedestrian refuge, pedestrian lights that you would, you know, the flashing, rectangular flashing beacons is what this had, was intended to be, with a trail connection to the trail on the east side and then provide trail connections to the ridge and then down to the county system on the west side. In researching this, I was real hesitant about this because at 45 miles an hour, fairly high speeds and on McCaslin, you don't expect to come to a stop at that, at that fastest speed with just the rectangular flashing lights. I think if we lowered the design speed, maybe it's an option, but at 45 and people are really traveling 50, 55, this may not be a great solution. The best solution is probably an underpass. And we looked at that feasibility and connecting, making trail connections. Yes, feasible, it's probably safest, but it is, does cost over a million dollars to do something like that. And finally, we seem to end up with the concept of a traffic signal at High Plains where, which would serve both vehicular traffic, allowing the vehicles from the ridge to be able to make left turns out onto McCaslin, provide a pedestrian protected with a regular traffic signal and provide connections to the trail system. And in fact, we budgeted funds for this project in the coming year, but the board wanted this to go through the process. And this was the evaluation matrix that I presented back in early January and February, March, kind of looking at different criteria, pedestrian safety, vehicle delay, other concerns, what the cost range. I actually developed a scoring system based on criteria and the actual highest level based on, because safety was such a high scoring, the grade separation was the highest scoring one, but you've got to temper that with the cost of the project. Second was the traffic. Well, at the October work session, the mayor said, well, why don't you consider roundabouts at Christensen? So, well, we did, and I, we went back. We had considered either a roundabout at High Plains or a roundabout at Christensen early on in the process when we were looking at the pedestrian crossing for the ridge residents. So we had, you know, here's a potential, would a roundabout fit, would a roundabout fit here? And then we did an evaluation of at-grade crossing, grade separation, traffic signal or roundabout at High Plains, traffic signal or roundabout at Christensen. And we scored them, and actually the roundabout at High Plains actually scored better than the traffic signal. But the cost was again a factor. So I have that scoring, I have that available and would like input from you and from the community because we do have a project budgeted, but there seems to be some reservations on, at least on the part of the board, whether that's the appropriate solution, you know, to put a traffic light in, does a traffic light fit in with the vision now that we've also developed for McCaslin? So welcome your comments and questions about that. So I'll move on to our next focus area.
Neighborhood electric vehicles or alternative vehicles?
That's right. We're almost done, folks. This is the last section that we'll be presenting to you this evening. Back in 2009, town staff presented potential for a neighborhood electric vehicle ordinance or regulations that would provide this type of travel throughout the town. At that time, LSC Traffic or Transportation Consultants did an analysis of superior facilities. And they did find that the most important thing to consider is the speed differential on any given facility between different types of users. And they recommended that the top speed differential should never exceed 15 miles an hour. So for consideration for neighborhood electric vehicles, a couple of things need to be determined, which types will be allowed? Will they be allowed to travel through the underpasses? And what future connections, if any, should be installed? This is just a brief table that accompanied LSC's analysis, just kind of showing different types of classes and where they could be allowed through the town. With this, we developed town maps just to look for connectivity, to see if these were going to be beneficial for the town at this time, given our current transportation network. Segways are a consideration for a neighborhood electric vehicle. They have a maximum speed of 12 and a half miles per hour. They're allowed on sidewalks, multi-use paths, local streets with 25 miles an hour speed limit. Again, that's below the 15 mile an hour speed differential. They're also allowed on bike lanes if sidewalks are not present. And as you can see from this map, it's kind of hard to read, the different colors just represent different types of networks throughout the town, but there is really good connectivity if segways were desired to be part of this ordinance. Next thing we looked for were golf carts, maximum speed of 20 miles an hour, therefore they're allowed on local streets with 25 miles per hour. In order for golf carts to really be effective within the town of Superior, some changes would have to be made. A few of those would be to change some speed limits on some of our existing streets, specifically Coal Creek Drive and Rock Creek Circle. Currently, those are 35 miles per hour. If we reduce that down to 30, golf carts then could travel on those streets. Even then, at that point though, there's no connectivity with Rock Creek Village, meaning Rock Creek residents couldn't get to the grocery store. And then there's also no connectivity between the town center, the marketplace and Rock Creek. So we would be proposing with the future transportation plan, assuming that we're going to be doing some connectivity on Coal Creek Drive, to make sure that the golf carts would be designed in if an ordinance should go through, as well as expanding some of the trail facilities, widening the trail connections behind Safeway to allow golf carts to travel on selected areas through that part of the neighborhood. The next category we have is what's called a low-speed electric vehicle. And these have a maximum speed of 25 miles an hour. What these exactly are, we're still kind of trying to determine at this point. They just kind of look like a little fancier version of a golf cart. Colorado State statute says that these vehicles have at least three wheels in contact with the ground at any given time, and they don't use handlebars this year, so they're not a scooter, that type of thing. As you can see from these, these also have fairly good connectivity through the entire town. No major changes would have to occur for these to be accommodated. And the final level is a low-speed electric vehicle class B. These have higher maximum speeds of up to 40 miles per hour. Again, what these exactly are, we're still trying to kind of determine that. This is a picture of what these would be, or what these could look like through town. And again, we have fairly good connectivity through the town, should this desire, or should you desire to look into this deeper? So, go ahead.
Okay. So that kind of summarizes our presentation. And, you know, at this point, we presented a lot of stuff. We're ready to, we'd like to get your input and make any revisions to the draft plan. It's a draft plan that we want to take out to the public and get, you know, reaction from the public, the community, the stakeholders and so forth, especially the people live near McCaslin, there's some major issues there. So we welcome any comments you have on it, any things you would like to add or delete from what we sent out.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll just take each person as they have comments. If you could, just give me a little hand wave and I'll recognize you by name. That way we can keep track of people better on the recordings. So who'd like to start?
I have a quick question before we go around. Is there a staff comment on how in the world this kind of plan was just kind of dropped on everybody? It was not really part of a community process? It's kind of, in my opinion, kind of a cart before the horse, that it's not the community that's come forth with what I see as huge changes at a huge monetary cost. And it's going to be almost as a token presented for a community, a community meeting that many people may not make it to for whatever reason. And we know that large community-wide things like town center and comp plan and things like that took many, many, many sessions of community input to really understand and flesh it out. So I see this as just a backwards process and I'd like to understand from staff what in the heck's going on.
We're, you know, the schedule of community input, we welcome your comments on how we do that. A lot of these issues were presented or were available at the, all the neighborhood, the community meetings.
They were one tiny poster way off to the side where almost everybody's attention They were one tiny poster way off to the side where almost everybody's attention was on the parcels, the parcels, the parcels, because primarily comp plan work was around the parcels. And anything having to do with something like this was so far off to the side, I know it was not part of any central discussion going on.
And that's, I think, maybe that was the board's feeling, too. So we're welcome. We can put mailings to everybody along McCaslin or along any of these routes, or, you know, we want to get as much input. We proposed the process here. If you don't think it's adequate, we can sure change it. It's not cast in stone in terms of the public process.
I don't think it's adequate, having one scheduled meeting. And I'm not even starting my comments yet. This is just from a broader point of view. Wait till I get into my comments.
And it's not like we need to finish with the planning commission tonight. We can come back, you know, you can give us your suggestions. We can go back and provide additional information or graphics or what have you to you. It's not like we need to have this meeting and that. You know, we're open to anything you want to do. We want to get adequate comment and adequate input from all stakeholders. So it's not like this is cast in stone.
I just see that there's already been a huge effort and a huge amount of money put toward what seems to be a very singular plan, and it's all about McCaslin and Rock Creek on the most part. But that, we'll go into more of my comments as we go around. I'm just baffled.
Okay. Commissioner McCool?
Sure. I agree to some extent with Commissioner Ripmester that this needs to go through a well-vetted public process. There are lots of areas of town that are impacted by this. I know even one change was made regarding Coal Creek Drive, because we got our eyes on it a little bit early and identified, you know, that Coal Creek Drive had been identified as a minor collector, and we're really surprised by that. But as you saw, it actually got changed back to a local street. I'm not sure what else like that might exist in the plan that the public ought to be able to see so that the residents can comment on, you know, how they feel about any changes that affect their input. I suspect that's less so in Rock Creek since it was a pretty well-planned development, but still, it should be vetted pretty well in the public. Let's see, I just, this wasn't exactly the plan, so I've got some comments of things you didn't even talk about here. One was just kind of the RTD component. I mean, I know it's highly unlikely that light rail is going to be here anytime soon, but there's no mention of light rail in the transportation plan as it relates to RTD, whether we support it or not support it. Is that left out for any particular reason?
Light rail is not going to be part of this plan.
Okay.
The Thirty-Sixth Corridor is the bus rapid transit.
Okay. So it's too far out, even at all?
They determined in two thousand four that this corridor couldn't handle it at the Davidson Mesa.
Right. You know, Fast Tracks Plan had commuter rail from Boulder, and that would go through Louisville essentially along the existing rail corridor. That was part of the Fast Tracks Plan, so we really haven't commented on that because it's not near Superior. We never really took a position for or against it, but we were in favor, town was in favor of Fast Tracks when it was implemented. Obviously, it had improvements for Thirty-Sixth Corridor that we were interested in. So again, we weren't silent, you know, we were silent on commuter rail, that whole issue. I don't think we want to get embroiled in that since that...
I don't think it's an issue anymore.
Right.
It's not an issue anymore. It never rose to the level of being part of the plan.
Well, commuter rail is a big issue for Boulder County.
Right. But in terms of coming all the way down, US Thirty-Sixth all the way to Boulder, it diverged and went up north along the railroad corridor and into Louisville. We have focused totally on the notion that, you know, this is, we have a plus rapid transit station here and that sort of thing, and we have to, you know, develop around and with that. So the train or light rail, it's just not part of the discussion. It's gone.
Okay. Let's see. You didn't touch too much on the northwest corridor, and there is some comment in there. I know there have been, are we not opposed to the corridor? Or are we, we kind of just have one paragraph in here about making sure we participate in the planning process, but is that as strong a statement as we would have made in our transportation plan at this point?
Well, the board reviewed that and massaged that particular policy several times, and that's kind of what they landed on in terms of their, I know that we have litigation ongoing with the Jefferson Parkway Authority, so I don't think the board is in favor of the Parkway itself as it's currently constituted. Possibly that concept may go away, and some other thing may come in its place, so they thought we should be involved and make sure we have input to the process.
Okay. I also noticed on page twenty-seven, just because I was kind of looking for the Coal Creek issue, that we stopped at major collectors and didn't list the minor collectors. Are there no other minor collectors in town? That's a possibility, I guess, but...
There are a number of connectors that are probably considered mining. You know, for example, if you, from Oak Creek Parkway, Coal Creek, you know, connects to Eldorado Drive, that little segment, Eldorado Drive could be considered a minor collector.
It's just that we identified, you know, we specifically identified freeways and major arterials, minor arterials, everything goes in the chart all the way down, and it stopped at major collectors, and we didn't list the minor collectors. It seemed if we're going to identify them, and that could raise some concern, we probably have to list the...
It's probably, you know, twenty-twenty-fives.
There's probably what?
Twenty-twenty-five.
Okay.
Could be considered those. And did you have a change? There was a, actually on page twenty-two, that table four, that last line collector should be really local.
Can you repeat that?
The last line in that table, you see it goes, it says collector. Right above is minor collector, major collector, or really should have been collector, it shouldn't have been local instead of collector, that last line.
That should be local, okay. Okay. Cool. And then, I guess, really on my last comment, the roundabouts, you could have stopped five minutes into your presentation. I'm definitely in support of roundabouts, just so you know. I think we need to be careful how many we put in town probably, and, you know, obviously, you know, what we're trying to support. I, in just my experience through all the ones in our town, it's been very positive, one, both as a pedestrian as well as a cyclist and driving a vehicle in all cases. I think we've done a really good job, and I appreciate your commitment to them, and I think they work well, especially in a town this size and the type of traffic that we have. Again, barring probably more...
And, you know, the reason why, I guess, we came up with the concept, added more on McCaslin is because we kept hearing through the whole Jefferson Parkway discussions that people along McCaslin didn't want all this traffic coming through. They didn't want it to be a regional arterial. They wanted to slow the traffic down and kind of discourage, you know, high-speed traffic from using that facility. And to lower the speeds, it was difficult to lower the speeds just by putting a lower speed limit. I mean, if the design speed is high, just by putting a lower speed limit, doesn't mean people are going to drive slower. So you need something from a design standpoint. So the origin of this concept, what medians and roundabouts, is really looking at calming the whole corridor, but having, you know, having efficient traffic flow, but not having real high-speed traffic coming through our town.
Yep. And then lastly, on electric vehicles, there wasn't, unless I missed it, there's a lot going on there, but the mention of scooters, I mean, other than you mentioned that they weren't part of, part of it, there was no actual mention of two-wheel vehicles, electric scooters, potentially even motorized scooters, which we have running around town now that do, you know, eight, ten miles an hour or something like that. Was that left out for any particular reason?
Those fall under different, excuse me, those fall under different state statutes, and so it's something we can examine more specifically if we need to, but as far as, you know, developing the neighborhood electric vehicle, those are the classifications that the state statutes cover.
Okay. It would seem we'd want to address that only because they are, they're probably more prevalent than any other type of electric vehicle or any other type of vehicle, not just electric vehicles. They're slow-moving vehicles and...
I know my daughter, who had a scooter, you know, there's a difference between the scooters that are, you know, low speed and they can only go a certain amount. They don't have to be registered, and if you want to go on the, you know, I think over thirty-five miles an hour, you've got to have a regular licensed vehicle. So there's that distinction between the scooters, and that probably incorporated in our audience. One thing on neighborhood vehicles that came up, I think, at ProStan, about are we going to allow these vehicles through the underpasses? We have McCaslin on the pass, we could have, we have the one at Coal Creek, we have potentially another one on McCaslin. Is that something we want to consider? And I guess I, we need some analysis of that, because now we're mixing through underpasses, confined environment, you know, electric vehicles or different types of vehicles going through that. So I think that was a comment raised, and we're just presenting it, you know, we'll go through the process and raise that as an issue, and what's the feedback on that? What's the safety issues and so forth?
Well, I moved here from Peachtree City, Georgia, which I don't know if you're familiar with that, with that area, but they have been, the golf carts are allowed on every single path with pedestrians, bicycles, and I was amazed that it worked, but it's still to this day, and they're up to, I don't know, there are around fifty thousand people there. There were only three or four thousand people in that town when I left. It's probably worth looking at how that works for them. Their paths are probably narrower than I hours. I mean, I would say there were times it was a little scary as a pedestrian at times with all the golf carts that were floating around, but they're allowed everywhere. They're allowed on bike paths, on the roads, on cart paths. In fact, they're called cart paths, they're not called pedestrian paths. So that might be a good place to take a look at.
So it had real issues, because on US Thirty-Sixth Bike Way, I know they'll probably not allow those other than maintenance vehicles, but we have, you know, one of our town board members is really pushing this, you know, alternative vehicles and provide, you know, pathways for these vehicles, and so we...
Oh, and I like what you're saying, the idea of maybe permitting certain access points that maybe we widen a little bit, make it better. That's all I have for now. I might have more comments after Rochelle's done, but...
Okay, who's next?
I'll try.
Okay. Commissioner Ricker?
I have a couple of concerns. I've been looking at this whole thing. First of all, I know you're a big proponent, Alex, in the roundabouts, and you kind of refer to the circle concept as a less desirable feature. And I think the roundabouts are a good idea for slowing things down, but to put that many on McCaslin would seem to me to slow things down, but I don't see in the area, in the regional picture of this whole area, between the development of the Jefferson Parkway, the Interlockin thing going on next to us of Brookfield, the open space that's going on with Boulder County next to us, that there's really too many north-south arteries, period. And I don't really understand how we're going to be able to slow the inevitable progress that's going to happen, where people are just going to have to develop a north-south corridor, especially when McCaslin's such a big part of the arterial system of Louisville. I don't see how that's going to happen. Currently, we have a trucking crane company, Westside Cranes, that resides on McCaslin and uses Colton Road at least two or three times a day, and they make it around that roundabout that's, we put in. And I'd sure love to know what they think about it now that they've done it for a while. I know that they can't make that turn with a semi-flatbed truck without getting up on the island or the middle, especially with all the other barriers, whatever you want to call them, that exist. I just, you know, and then the biggest picture I have of the whole McCaslin corridor vision is I like all the views, but we have some pretty good grades that go on between Rock Creek and Colton, and even up to Indiana, there's another rise, and I just see a lot of money being spent trying to get grades to accommodate roundabouts that are going to be strategically put in. And I guess I would like to see if there's a phasing plan that you guys are planning on doing. It's a lot of money. I mean, I can look at this map of all these roundabouts on McCaslin, and I could start to check up some change between that and some underpasses. So I don't know if that's going to be the benefit in the end that everybody wants to see. Appropriateness to speed limits, I'm all for slowing things down, but I don't know. If we don't change the grades, then you'll just have people moving faster roundabouts. That's what I suspect. You're going to have people coming into those merging, you know, appearances, and they're going to be going faster than they should be regardless of whether we want to get it desired at twenty miles an hour or not. The NEV regulations on the alternate-type vehicles, you know, the biggest question I would have here is, I know that they put in the golf cart regulations and some of these alternative vehicles for areas that are more resort and golf course-oriented communities, and I don't see that. I mean, I don't know where we're going to be putting any golf courses in Superior in the near future. And I don't know what that eventually does for anybody, except we'll have to go back and re-widen a lot of our park paths or pedestrian paths, and there's a lot of money to be spent there, too. And I don't know if that's going to be a benefit. We have some unique grades going on in Rock Creek because we have a non-flat environment that exists in this community. So I would ask you to look at that. Getting back to landscaping part of the McCaslin corridor vision, you're trying to do a couple different things. You've got the park thing going on up at the top at Rock Creek Boulevard, and then you're trying to take it down to native grasses type stuff going more towards Indiana. I don't know. Is that consistent? Is that what we want to do? I mean, I don't know. Is McCaslin, I guess, the question I've got to ask, is that a feature of Superior? Are we trying to tear it up so that nobody will know what McCaslin really is? I'm not really sure.
Well, McCaslin was built by the county. It was a rural road, and so it's been there, you know, for twenty, well, probably forty, fifty years now. And is that what we want for the town? I mean, we could just leave it there. I mean, it's not like I'm pushing this. What I've heard, the comments on Jefferson Parkway, do something about McCaslin to slow the traffic down. If you've got to slow it down, we've got to make major changes, and maybe that's, you make a recommendation. Don't do anything, leave it as it is. I mean, I, to me, if you want the speed limits lowered, you've got to do something, you know, drastic like this, put medians aroundabouts to really make it work.
I'm not, I think there's some good ideas being...
And right, you know, here's a vision, you know, what do we want it to be? And here's one idea. And if you guys, the community wants something else, or they want to leave it as it is, because, you know, it's next to an open space rural environment, maybe it's perfectly defined the way it is. You took, this is...
That's why I talked regionally about this, Alex. It wasn't to tear it up. It's just like, okay, let's just look at the big picture of the town of Superior as part of the Broome Field thing that's going on. We'll call Interlockin all the way over to, you know, two eighty-five, or, you know, we can talk about it all the way going west. Where's the next north-south corridor in Boulder County's open space? I don't see any there.
Right, right. I mean, we could put curb and gutter and make it an urban roadway. I mean, that's another way to do it. So we kind of compromise. We still have that rural feeling, but we have medians and techniques for bringing the design speed down. And if that, we're putting it out there. You and the town board set the vision. Here's one vision. If you don't like that, we'll leave it the way it is. That's, you know, fine. I mean, you give us that input. I mean, it's certainly a big issue, and the staff's not, you know, married to this. We just developed a concept. If you want to lower the speed limits, here's one way, here's one way to do it.
I'm just saying, the road, obviously, it was necked down to two lanes from Rock Creek on due to some issues with, obviously, soil.
Cost.
Soil's cost, a whole lot of things were going on.
You know, a little background on that, a little background on... Well, you know, you know, a little background on that, a little background on that is that we, we looked at a plan for extending the four lanes all the way down to one twenty-eight. And that's when we had the Verhe property and we had a lot more development west of McAslin that was planned. And if that, if that occurred and we had all the regional traffic, we would have needed four lanes. And ten years ago, whatever, the board said, no, we want that, it's two lanes, we don't want to make any change. So the plan back then was, we're going to have two lanes, nothing else, we're not going to consider any, any kind of widening. So that decision was made by a former, a prior town board. So we have two lanes. Now, we get input, input that there's still too much traffic and the speed's too high. All right, what do we do? And so we're, we're floating this out there and trying to, trying to get the community input on, on what to do.
I'm just afraid we're trying to neck everything down, is what they call it. We're trying to neck all this stuff down and...
Mm-hmm, sure.
That progress will, will, will its ugly head, unfortunately, unfortunately. Right now, we're in an enviable situation, we're not allowed to develop anything around Superior, so it's good. My own comment.
Commissioner Roberts?
Sure. First question I had, I seem to recall that, and I'm looking at the roadway plan, figure ten, which is page twenty-three, and I see a double roundabout which for the entry point into town center, but I seem to recall that there was going to be a, at one point in time, you were considering another roundabout on McAslin, a little bit south of that point, but still at the bottom of the Key Bank Hill. Has that been changed?
Yeah.
I can't, I, I don't know the name of that street, I'm just...
Roundstone.
I just seem to recall that there were going to be two roundabouts on McAslin, one feeding the town center entry point and then another one, I guess, up towards Key Bank, but still basically...
Now, you know, this is Rock Creek Parkway.
I understand.
This particular, that's Discovery.
Something down in the...
Yes, that's Discovery and that's, that's a two corridor access and that's, that's on the downgrade.
Okay.
So putting a, a full movement there or any kind of...
Okay.
...control was always problematic.
Right.
And, and so we're, we're trying to get it down where it flattens out, you know, where it flattens out and that's, that's where, where the main entrance to the town center.
I just seem to recall that there was a talk about having two roundabouts on McAslin. I guess it would be north of Discovery, closer to where the one, the pair is now.
We've only proposed one here and then the one in the town center. So these, these are the two...
Okay.
...that serve the town center. Those are the two right next to you.
Okay. Generally speaking, I'm in favor of roundabouts. I live near the one at Eighty-Eighth and Rock Creek and given all of the various alternative ways that that intersection had been handled in the past, the roundabout works the best as far as I'm concerned. But that's, that's a T-intersection. And, and looking at the one at Colton, that's also a T-intersection. And was the only purpose of having it one lane in each direction just to slow traffic down because navigating all of that, it's, it's very much of, it seems like very much of a pinch point when I go through there, whether I'm coming...
At Colton?
Ah, yes.
You know, we, we had debated to put another, another lane in, especially for the westbound right. And we felt it was safer for pedestrians to have a one-lane approach instead of a two-lane approach. And we felt the, the volumes would be handled by the single-lane roundabout. And we've, we've observed it, we've taken video and looked at delays and, you know, occasionally you get, you know, backup of four, five, six vehicles on one or the other approach, but they dissipate, you know, fairly quickly. I mean, the overall delay is less than four or five seconds per vehicle that we observed during the peak hour. So right now, it's functioning fine and we think it'll be okay, you know, with the, with the traffic projections.
Well, wasn't the impetus for that, though, the development of a trailhead and, I mean, they were, that, that, we're talking about Colton and...
Yes.
The impetus to that was the development of a trailhead and the need for traffic now to go across Colton and into the...
Right, before the...
The trailhead, there was, there was a lot of concern about putting, having to change the whole lighting system, signaling to, signaling to allow people to come out of the Colton trailhead safely. So that's what, that's where the discussion started because it was either you enhance that, that, the signaling at that intersection or, you know, or you put in a roundabout. And that was the, that's what kind of drove that project at that time.
That is correct.
And the decision was to put a roundabout in.
The other, the other question I had about Colton was, there's basically two pieces of property on the north and southeast corner of Colton that have one development status or another and whether, I think one is the Richmond property on the northeast corner and then there's, whether that goes residential or whether we put in a community center or something like that. If those two corners get developed regardless of how, we need to consider enlarging that roundabout just for the emptying of those two developments or allowing access to McAslin. In other words, right now, there's nothing there. And so Colton narrows from two lanes to one and...
As discussed when that one was put in, that ship sailed. And those of us who were not advocating that narrowing to one lane, yeah. So if we go back on that, then it's just another ka-ching, ka-ching on, on what we've already done and what was debated and many people didn't feel one lane was going to be appropriate for their trucks, fire trucks, these flatbeds. These issues were all presented and they were shot down, so.
The, you know, it's like any other intersection that you, especially with roundabouts, you know, single-lane roundabouts are much simpler for the public to understand. And we always, the traffic engineers, we have a rule of thumb, if it's going to be okay for ten years, it's good to put the single-lane roundabout in first and expand it, you know, later. And again, like any other development that come in, if you have more traffic, you would accommodate, you do traffic studies, you'd see if that roundabout would accommodate that additional traffic. If it doesn't, they got to pay for the, the upgrade, the, the additional lane if you would need another lane on, on the roundabout. So right now, we're not, no, nothing really happening on those two properties and we'll cross that, that bridge when those developments come in, we'll do our traffic studies and see if that roundabout functions. If not, we'll make the new development pay for, for the upgrade.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, on the truck issue, the issue of the size of the roundabouts and how big it is, the, the bigger you make the roundabout, the faster the speeds. So you have this balancing act to try to get the speeds low enough to make it safer and yet accommodate vehicles. You can't accommodate every vehicle, that's why you put these truck aprons in to take the vehicles that are, that are much high and you only get a few of those. So it's a val- balancing act in the design, the design process. Most of the, most of the vehicles that go through here have no problem going through, but you get the flatbed trailers or some real big vehicle and they go up on the, on the truck apron and that's what it was designed for. Again, do you want all these trucks going through? Do you want encouraged trucks going, going through the town or not?
Well, do you want your groceries to get to safety?
I mean, that's, I mean, I'm looking at, I'm looking at two, two maps or two, two diagrams, one that shows weekly traffic, basically now two thousand and ten and another one, two thousand and thirty-five. And the, and McAslin is the only north-south, so, I mean, we have to move whatever traffic is there through it. And that's going to be a function of speed and how many lanes we have. And it seems to me that we don't, we certainly have to avoid any kind of congestion for town center ingress, egress because that's going to, I mean, we want to encourage traffic flow to a certain extent there because it's going to be residents and stores and so on and so on. So I'm just, I, I appreciate the balancing act part, part of it, I'm just not sure how slowing everything down is going to help traffic flow. It might make it slower or safer, but I don't know, just in terms of moving things in and out, whether that's, whether we're shooting ourselves in the foot, I guess that might be...
You know, one, I don't know if I mentioned this during my golden presentation, but they, we also looked at speeds before and after and we looked at travel time through the corridor. And before the roundabouts went in, the eighty-fifth percentile speed was forty-seven miles an hour. And that was deemed really unacceptable in that area. After the roundabouts went in, the speed at, you know, at the fastest point you could go, the eighty-fifth percentile was thirty-three miles an hour. But we looked at travel time through the corridor, measuring travel time and since you weren't being stopped at these traffic signals, you could actually travel faster, not faster, but less time to the corridor with the roundabouts or with the traffic signals. The whole key is the speeds came down, but it really wasn't affecting the travel time you're going through. And what are, are residents complaining about speeds? I think that's a major issue. They don't like the speeds and noise and so forth. They don't like all the traffic either, but, you know, roundabouts would at least bring those, and medians would bring the, the speeds down a little bit. And we hope maybe people, some people don't like roundabouts and maybe they would go other places because they want to...
I like roundabouts, that's not really my issue. I'm just trying, trying to look down the road a little bit and see just how much traffic it's going to handle in terms of just raw vehicles and making sure that they can navigate, you know, town center because that's essential. If people get annoyed because it's a, it's a constant clog there, then why have a business or why do I want to live there or any of these other factors?
Thank you. Okay, who's next?
So his last comments actually segue very well into kind of what I'm going to ask about here because I'm, I'm frankly just totally baffled by this plan overall. And I'm, it may kind of seem like I'm jumping around, but it's because of the data and the maps are, are kind of scattered throughout, but I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments and an overarching, amazing oversight. You guys have said absolutely nothing about Marshall Road and the, and the increased traffic that's going to come in from town center and what we're going to have to face from down in this part of town. And you look at any of your data and that is the overwhelming by fact, multiple factors of the traffic in this town. And, and there's not one word. I'm shocked. All right, so let's start with on page two. A statement is made, "The major roadways through the town are currently at or close to capacity." Based on what numbers? Because I've seen us in the not-so-distant past put up maps when we had asked about Marshall Road. And Alex, you've given even the huge backups we have at Marshall Road going into McAslin, a C. You even said, oh, that's not even totally at capacity. So if, if, if Marshall Road backed up all the time is not at capacity, then you tell me what? McAslin is, Colton, Rock Creek Parkway, Indiana? That's just, in my opinion, this is a nonsense statement. The major roadways in our town are mostly at capacity. I, I, I can't even begin to see that. Segueing with that statement, I do want to hop over to, because this is very important. I came to the sessions regarding the redesign of the overpass with, when Louisville was here and they set up their posters. And I recall very clearly the numbers, the, the traffic numbers, traffic volumes reflected coming from Marshall and then coming from McAslin, south of Marshall. Marshall had double the traffic numbers that from just south of Marshall and coming from the McAslin side had. In figure four, we're showing them as actually not being too far off from one another, which is in total contrast, if not contradiction, of the data that was presented by the town of Louisville in their, on, in all these studies. Just right there, I'm concerned, what are, what are truthful numbers and what aren't? Because I, I remember seeing that, I remember pointing it out to someone else and they, they sat there and they said, oh, my gosh, you're right. Two-thirds of the traffic that goes into the intersection at Marshall and McAslin comes from the Marshall side. So I'd like that to be clarified because these numbers on figure four don't seem to be reflecting it, so I wonder what else is off here. We've had all this emphasis on roundabouts, we've had basically an entire plan presented to us that's all about McAslin and how can McAslin be nicer for people who bought homes that back up to McAslin? Frankly, I bought a home in a part of town because I like to have access to Highway thirty-six and I live with the white noise and whatever else comes with that because that's, that's what I chose. We have people who chose to have homes that happen to back up to McAslin. And I'm, I'm, I'm frankly not clear on why as a town we are looking at massive amounts of money to be dedicated basically for those homeowners that they say, oh, gee, now I guess I don't like it so much that I back up to McAslin. I don't find that to be fiscally responsible to the larger town. In terms of traffic calming, I, I'd like to know what else was explored besides roundabouts? We do have, as Tom mentioned, a really significant topography that just inherently creates a lot of the high-traffic speeds that we have. And I'm not sure that then putting in a bunch of roundabouts is the wisest or only way to, to calm, to calm that. I also wonder what does Boulder County think about us taking what would be a major arterial and trying to neck it down to basically being a minor collector? You know, I don't know if that affects any of the larger planning that happens at the Boulder County level. Does it affect any of the Dr. Cog planning, RTD access for our town, whatever? But again, it seems to be in a real bubble that, that this has been created. The round, the roundabouts I see being projected for Rock Creek Parkway. I've lived in Boston, I grew up in a city that had a major roundabout and my, and I, and as you said, there are different kinds of roundabouts and all this and that, but typically, I've seen roundabouts address intersections where you have approximately balanced traffic. And, and then it becomes an, an optimal way that when you have like a constant flow from one side to another, to kind of give it balance and, and keep it flowing. I think at Eighty-Eighth and Rock Creek Parkway, that, that was a very appropriate place to put a roundabout because you had that balance. These other locations on Rock Creek Parkway, you have a local street coming into a collector. What, what is the need of a round, an expensive roundabout there? People bought their homes in a, in a neighborhood and you go into the neighborhood on a local street. And so you come up to a stop sign and you wait and then you get onto the road. It, it, it's not that difficult. As a pedestrian, and I'm a big pedestrian, frankly, I find roundabouts to be not so good. I'm not sure if I'm as visible as need be. I have to now, instead of walking directly across intersections, I'm having to, oh, I got, walk over to my right, way over to my right. Okay, now I can finally cross, now I'm going to walk way back over to my left. I'm not sure that's so pedestrian-friendly. Also, you made quite a presentation on all sorts of data regarding the safety of roundabouts. Where's our data? We've, we've now had these neighborhoods established and these intersections established for what, fifteen, eighteen years? Where is our data that says, we have safety issues and we think that they will be addressed by this? Because frankly, when we put in the roundabout at Colton, we didn't have safety issues down there. There would have been two accidents in ten years. And frankly, I, I felt that, that we had... And frankly, I felt that we had a better solution by just creating a traffic signal finally coming from the west side.
I'm going to interrupt you there, I'm sorry. Because that development of that trailhead down there, there was considerable discussion from Open Space Advisory Committee, your Parks and Recreation Department. There was a considerable amount of work being done ahead of that intersection being developed. And we anticipated, and it's been true, that we have a very high pedestrian and bike population now at that trailhead because, or at that intersection because of the trailhead. So be really careful what we say at Colton. That was done for a very specific purpose. It wasn't because there was an issue with, I agree with you, there was no issue with Rock Creek coming into Colton. There never was. Nothing would have been done at that intersection if we didn't build a regional trailhead on the west side and drive a tremendous amount of traffic. So let's knock back, because considerable work was put into the town to make sure that that was.
But I am going to, that if this is being proposed based on safety numbers, then what are our numbers? Give us what's going on here. A study down in Golden where those streets are completely different, the usage of those streets are completely different, they're not just sitting back in, they look like they have all sorts of commercial and all sorts of mixed stuff, which is very different than, let's say, you know, Indiana and Rock Creek Parkway. Where are our data that drive that?
Can I just answer that one? I did have data when we did monitor Eighty-Eighth and Rock Creek Parkway, and we had accident data before it went in and accident data afterwards, but it was immediately in the time period before and after. And as I recall, there were eight accidents in a two-year period or so before it went in, and there was like two afterwards. So it was a pretty substantial, we were getting accidents at that point, we were really having a hard time turning left from Eighty-Eighth on to Rock Creek Parkway.
Right, because the character of those two.
And then I've asked this of our sheriff's office, do you have any accident data on McCaslin-Colton? And he says, you know, I have to go back and collect, you know, four or five years of data, and I'd like to get all the accident reports from when it was open. But he says they have very few of any accidents at Colton, and I need to substantiate that.
And similarly on Rock Creek Parkway, where these are being proposed for Rock Creek Parkway?
And those, you know, you're right about the traffic flows, and I think the real issue is not traffic control is really getting pedestrians, you know, across. And traditionally, we're crossing them, we have the crosswalks at the four-way intersections where you have the turn lanes and you're crossing almost a hundred feet of pavement to get from one side to the other. It may make some sense to cross mid-block, cross into the median where you have a pedestrian refuge, and put maybe the flashing beacons or something mid-block.
Do you need roundabouts to do that?
No, no, I'm not saying that that's the problem and.
And make these more pedestrian-friendly intersections based on not having such wide, wide expanses of asphalt that were created with these roads? So let me go on because I still have more. So again, if I look at a lot of this data where Marshall Road, which carries, you know, from Seventy-Sixth Street to McCaslin, by far the lion's share of traffic all over the place. And yet, not one word in this regarding Marshall, regarding a vision of what's going to happen when we now have thousands of car trips competing from across McCaslin. Not one mention of whatever happened to our third-left turn lane, which now, as we get once again into the holidays, it's going to be almost impossible to get out from Sycamore. I'm just baffled. We've never even had a really good breakdown as to when we now get this new double-braded, whatever it is going over the highway. How is that actually going to finally create the proper balance of flow from the Marshall side when, for the twelve years or more now that I've lived here, Marshall continues to be considered the secondary, when in fact, the data show that it's where two-thirds of the traffic is that's going up into the intersection? So I'm just, I just look at this overall plan and say, well, this is, why don't we just call it the Rock Creek Enhancement Plan and leave it at that? Because this does not do anything for any other part of town. That's my comment.
Okay. Who wants to follow up next? Okay, Commissioner Sawtelle? Thank you.
Thank you for what I found to be a very cogent, informative presentation. I don't pretend to be an expert in traffic control devices, but it's obvious to me that each of you are and that you've spent a good deal of time studying these issues. I don't have questions so much as comments and feedback. I found your analysis about concerning roundabouts and their relative value vis-à-vis other traffic control measures to be very compelling. The data which speaks to the safety benefits of roundabouts is frankly stunning. I had never seen those figures before. And I would submit, that's the kind of evidence that cannot be ignored. And I would further submit, it would be reckless of us as a commission to ignore it. So I'm in favor of your plan. I think it appears to be well thought out. The basis for the proposal seems to be sound. And I'll speak to the costs in a moment, but moving on to roundabouts, the median design, I found it to be very nice, very attractive. It seems to make sense. It's reminiscent, in my mind, of some of the design that you see on the west side of the Flatirons Crossing Mall as you go down that divided roadway with the trees. I've often, you know, traveled that and noted that that's, you know, it's aesthetically pleasing. It also tends to slow things down a bit when you have a lot of traffic moving in and out of there. And certainly, there's a lot of traffic moving in and out of Flatirons Crossing Mall. I don't think anybody can dispute that. With respect to the concerns about the focus on McCaslin and what's driving that, whether it's property values, whether it's concerns over quality of life for the residents, et cetera, I come at it from a slightly different angle. McCaslin is a safety hazard. I don't think, I mean, I drive McCaslin every day. I see it every day, weekends and mornings. I use it to ride my bicycle and I use it to run. And I'm one of many, many residents who do that. And it's obvious that it has become a mixed-use thoroughfare. It would be one thing if we were talking about an interstate highway where you don't have, you know, intermingled cyclists and runners, but we certainly have that at McCaslin. And scarcely a day goes by when I don't witness a close call with runners, with cyclists, with the car traffic that goes by there. And frankly, that's a major concern that I have. And doing something about it, I think, is the responsibility of all of us. I'm not insensitive to the concerns about the costs of roundabouts, you know. Those things need to be considered. I would submit that the most appropriate way to do it, if, I don't know where the funding comes from, I assume it's by bonds or, but there's certainly nothing stopping us from looking at phasing in things. And these would seem to be the sort of long-term capital improvements that would warrant a game plan like that if they can't be done in one fell swoop. So I would advocate that we consider that. And if we don't consider that, knowing the hazards that exist on McCaslin, I would submit that we're getting into an analysis over the economics of harm, which begs the question of, what do we wait for before we take action? Do we wait for a fatality? Do we wait for five fatalities, ten? I'm not in favor of waiting for anything like that to happen, so. I applaud your design. I think it's very good, it's very well thought out to address some of the other concerns that some of the other commissioners have raised. I see no reason why we couldn't, if we wanted to amend the plan, to address some of the issues on Marshall and other parts of the community that warrant attention as well. But as for McCaslin and those roundabouts, I heartily endorse what you're doing.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Abdulwaz?
I have questions regarding the goal that you mentioned in the report, to minimize environmental impact, which is a good thing, but I don't see that you bring out those methods, it's not been highlighted. So I feel the consensus to be more, put more hands on it because if somebody can explain to me what are the measurements that would be used to mitigate those issues on environmental impact, having those high volume of traffic along McCaslin? Somebody can explain that, besides just having a buffer zone or like a barrier along McCaslin, what other mitigation could be used as an effective measurements to reduce those, for example, noise pollution and things like that?
Are there any medians in the roundabouts or?
Because your goal is to minimize environmental impact, and McCaslin is not just used for people, drivers, but it's also people that lives along the corridor. It has like impact towards the high volumes of traffic in the future. Even now, you know, people that lives there, you know, can feel that. So just beside just having trees as a buffer zone for, to mitigate noise pollution, what other measurements are you planning to propose, you know, to help?
Right, you know, the trees and the landscaping to buffer some of the noise, whether that's going to be effective or not. And I'm not sure what the residents would like to see out there. It's really difficult from a noise standpoint with the grades and different elevations of the houses and the road to be able to have effective noise mitigation. And that's probably beyond the scope of a planning process to do that. So I think when you get into the design process, we can look at that, what's the role when we actually get into median design and whether noise is an issue? We would tackle those. Don't have any specific recommendations in terms of the environmental issues in terms of the road planning. I think the neighborhood vehicle issue is certainly geared towards minimizing energy consumption and pollution and so forth by going to alternate fuels and lower-speed vehicles. So that's certainly oriented towards minimizing environmental impacts. But also trying to discourage, by the traffic calming, discouraging through traffic from coming through, you know, the lower the traffic volume is, the lower some of the environmental impacts would be in terms of noise and so forth. So I don't know if I've answered your question there, but we haven't gone that far in thinking about the environmental issues from that regard.
But that is going to be considered more towards the design?
More design process, right. So what do you think about the roundabouts near Christensen? You got to comment on that one?
I don't, I'm not really in favor of roundabout because I experienced, you know, having one roundabout in Colton actually has an impact, basically, because I live by McCaslin, so I know this difference. So having too many roundabout, I don't think so.
Right, because that particular one was suggested by the mayor. I'm not particularly in favor of it because, like Rochelle mentioned, it doesn't have a whole lot of side traffic. And for that particular one, whether it makes sense or not?
Yeah, because I think that Christensen is just like a road that everybody goes into their residence while having, because spend a lot of money just to have a roundabout there, it doesn't make much sense.
Right, and you, and real need for getting on McCaslin's left turns, and most of the traffic is going north from Christensen rather than south, and you do have other ways to go south, to go out to Indiana. So that one does make a whole lot of sense to me. Welcome your input on that. Okay, any other questions? Okay. Okay.
Can I just add something before we get off that subject? Has there ever been a study done, I'm sorry, on that Eighty-Eighth and Rock Creek Parkway roundabout and how it affects the traffic to Coal Ridge, Coal Creek, those streets there? That's been brought up a couple of times in the past, and I know the residents in those areas are.
People avoiding it or people?
No, just, we can't get out. Now you can't, you know, with the roundabout.
Just to know.
Yeah, dribbles in a constant pattern. We brought this up one time, I don't remember on another meeting, and I was just curious that.
That issue has come up in other, Golden came up because now you, instead of having these platoons of vehicles, you have a constant stream. So I know that's been an issue, whether it affects Coal Creek or Coal Ridge. I haven't heard that compared to.
Yeah, that's.
I imagine it's.
That's a hot subject.
It's, I imagine it's out there.
But our street.
Thank you for bringing that potential information.
Now we've just added this dog park and a treatment plan on the other side, and I don't know, I don't know that it's a negative, but it's added some more volumes to that area, I'll put it that way. It's probably minor at this point, but who knows in the future. But yeah, that seems to be the subject that lots of people complain about is, did the roundabout really benefit people on the other ulterior accesses up and down Rock Creek? And I would guess it's probably not as bad at Coal Creek as it is.
Coal Ridge.
At Coal Ridge, for whatever reason, but everybody's following it at Coal Ridge. Thank you.
Commissioner McColl?
A couple of follow-up questions from Rochelle's comments. So the lack of a mention of Marshall Road, I mean, is that three-lane turn, did that get approved? Am I?
It's still in the works.
It's still in the works?
It hasn't been approved. Where we are in that process, we had brought forward a plan of putting the third lane in the median, and the board had some concerns about that of taking, you're taking out landscaping for a travel lane. So we went back to the drawing board, and we've come up with an option of putting, adding it on the Conoco side and adding a right turn lane and not touching the median. So we have a concept that we're going to be discussing with them. So it's not, it was kind of postponed. I think the board would like to have something there, but they weren't, they didn't like that particular design because it took some of the median out.
I go through that all the time, and I see no reason to take out the median. If I'm in, let's say, the lane that currently proceeds straight, but that becomes a straight or left turn, in other words, that third-left turn lane, that third-left turn lane is the lane then that goes on to the Highway Thirty-Six on-ramp, which is what it was always discussed as, with the other two lanes continuing to proceed as they would proceed up over the overpass. So I don't know how it's gotten complicated. I know that's not the subject of this meeting, but.
And that also wasn't the purpose of my question, so if you wouldn't mind, I want to finish. It really wasn't about the redesign. Just curious where it was from a status standpoint. And I'm curious, you know, that there is no mention of Marshall. I know it's a state highway, and I don't know what our control is over that area. Can you talk to why that isn't mentioned in the transportation plan? Is it an oversight? Is it assumed to be?
Well, it's mentioned, it's mentioned there. There's no, you know, a lot, most of the roads and superiors, since they've been built within the last twenty years, went through a planning process and a design process, and Marshall Road was part of the marketplace. And Marshall Road was part of the marketplace and design with that whole marketplace theme in mind. So the vision, to me, was already established. So was Rock Creek Parkway and so was the number of roads. 76th Street probably wasn't, you know, and it's probably still kind of out there. But I think some of the development proposals that have come forth have looked at 76th. So McCaslin was never planned and it's a rural county road. And this is just a chance to look at, do we want something else or keep it the way it is? It's not like we're neglecting it. It's just that it was never really, a vision was never developed for that.
And Marshall Road was planned. I mean, it was planned for this market, but we don't like how necessarily what we had to do. But because of where the placement of the marketplace, there were very few options based on distances between intersections. I remember all those conversations. And it had to be put where it was put. And the other, the other comment, and I hadn't caught that, that there was a line in there about all of our roads being at or near capacity, which probably isn't quite accurate. We have roads that are, we have some roads that are at or near capacity. None of our roads are at or near capacity.
That should be changed. And we had a transportation plan. A lot of this was, this isn't come from scratch. A lot of this was written way back when and I carried forth a lot of it. And that particular clause was in there and probably should be revised.
Could I suggest that we try to, I think we can identify those. It would be great to identify those areas in the plan specifically. And I know living here, the Marshall and that whole turn process is probably at or near capacity. And if it continues to grow, that's going to be impacted. I know that the bridge and the intersection, this area is at or near capacity.
Sure, and we can put a level of service graphic in showing all the roads and what their level of service is. Like Rock Creek Parkway, that's four lanes and that's 10,000 vehicles on a road that's designed for 24,000. So it's at a very, you know, level of service is, you know, B or C. Whereas, you know, Marshall Road is probably at D and the intersection at times is at capacity. So we, if that's something you'd like, we could provide a graphic that shows, you know, level of service at all the major intersections and all the major roadways.
I think that would be helpful. And I, I mean, just in the, that I've paid attention to this over and through the comprehensive plan, I, I know that the intent is to make sure that this area is as well planned as it, as it can be. And I am concerned that we're overdeveloping that side, not that we don't, not that the, not that that area couldn't handle the development, but just, you know, whether or not this, this area can handle the, the traffic in this area. So, so, I mean, I have a concern about whether or not we're overdeveloping the town center in such a way that it impacts our, our quality of life on this end of town. But, but as regard, with regards to the transportation plan, I mean, I've always had the sense that there's an intent to do as best as we possibly can to ensure reasonable traffic flow through this area. Making sure that's articulated in the plan in such a way that as this moves through the public process, that that's really clear. I mean, why we're doing some of the things with the roundabouts at, at the marketplace. And even a double roundabout, which, that's going to raise eyebrows, right? I mean, I'm not even sure the two roundabouts, you know, what was it, 100 yards away? You even raised a little bit of concern, you know, as to whether that'll work or not. But being able to explain why that's, you know, that's going to work better than potentially putting a stop sign there, right, to get back things up properly. I think some of those things would help in the transportation plan so that as this moves through the process, you know, the true intent that I've been hearing through the comp plan is actually presented in the transportation plan.
To address the traffic projection issue that Rochelle raised, we did revise the projections. We've had issues with Dr. Cog's projections because, you know, they have the Northwest Corridor in their, their plan. They have growth, you know, we have regional growth coming through our corridor. And so when we went to DBI process, we had to use Dr. Cog forecast to make sure, you know, their forecasts are accommodated. What we did here, you know, board says, we don't want, we don't want Northwest Park. We don't want, we don't want that traffic coming through town. So the projections, the revised projections we have there are basically taking our existing traffic and accommodating traffic from, to the areas that are planned to be developed in town with just a small increase in through traffic. And so that's kind of a low end of the traffic perspective. And then you have the Dr. Cog at the high end. And then, so what do you design for? And, you know, do you want to make these big infrastructure improvements for the regional traffic? Or do you want to just design for our traffic? And so we have both sets of projections. We'll test intersections on both and see, well, is it worth, you know, building additional capacity for this other, other traffic that may not materialize? Also, in terms of how that whole area works with the interchange, with Marshall McCaslin, with the town center, we've developed simulations to try to show how this all is interact. There's one back into the other and so forth. So that's something we could bring forth, you know, a future presentation to show you the, the models we have. And, and that is the triple L, it's the diverging diamond, and then we have the town center. Is the town center roundabout going to work? Does it traffic, we have traffic signal and roundabout at the town center. So we could bring that forward if that's something you would like us to, to present at future meetings. Okay, I'll. Okay, I'll finish up with my comments. So overall, a good presentation and I think a good program to build upon. Couple of comments on section one introduction, it mentions the storage tech site, which maybe.
Storage tech site? Well, can't Conoco fill it?
Well, maybe it should be the former storage tech site or the Conoco site because it's there now. I know it's not going to be Conoco, but it's.
What'd you do with the?
It's actually.
So you might as well do one of that too.
We can check for.
Okay. So on roundabouts, I'm generally in support of roundabouts, I think, on select cases like Christensen, probably not the best candidate because the predominant traffic flow is to the north out of Christensen, so probably doesn't make the most sense there. I think the driving factors to me on the McCaslin separation slowdown, to me, it seems like it's a response to the projections from Jefferson, projected impacts from Jefferson Parkway. How do we make Superior less desirable to drive through so people go somewhere else? I just don't know that I buy that argument for why we're doing that. I think people are going to take the most direct route to where they're going. And if we make it more difficult, it's just going to slow it down for them and it's going to slow it down for the residents. And we've spent a lot of money doing it. And it just, I don't think it's going to create the desired effects. I'm not sure that I'm clear on the, the overall McCaslin improvements. Neighborhood electric vehicles, I am a big supporter of this concept right behind Chris Hansen. I think we've got a unique opportunity to define our community by allowing electric vehicles on a wide scale with town center. It's the perfect opportunity to get residents from Rock Creek, from Sagamore, from original town into town center. Our distances are just outside of what would be walkable. Not everybody's a biker and we've got weather factors. You've got cold weather and some days when it's just not going to work to bike or walk. I think a lot of focus should be put on golf carts. They're relatively cheap. They're available, versatile. So I think that's where the real focus should be. I don't see much of segues. For some reason, that concept never caught on and probably won't. So I think golf carts should be where we go. I like Commissioner McCool's analogy to the town he lived in in Georgia. I think, I've been in communities like that in Florida and I think it's fantastic. I think that's where we need to, to go. That, to me, would make a lot of sense to keep people from our own community driving and clogging up the roads, getting in, in and out of town center. I think people would find that they can get in and out of town center easier and even the marketplace and some other regional areas easier than getting in their car. And that's, just benefits everyone. And so as far as, you know, should we allow them in underpasses? Yes. Should we allow them on existing paths? Yes. You know, if they got to pull off to yield to runners, so what? I mean, I think, I think it can all be accommodated. So I'm a big fan of that. So thanks for the presentation. Any final comments? Just, you know, on McCaslin issue, should we present alternatives? You know, so here's one alternative, leaving it as it is, the traffic seems. And the alternative is what we presented here. And is there another, one more, more other options that you guys want, want us to develop?
Look at phasing. You know, phasing.
You know, I didn't talk about phasing, but I, you know, my concept is when sections of McCaslin start failing, we have to reconstruct or make a major improvement, that's the time that we consider, well, if we're going to do this, should we consider, you know, a roundabout or, or the meetings, whatever we're going to do in that area. So it's not like it's going to happen overnight. It's, it's subject to budget availability. This is a 20-year plan, so it's, you know, they'll be implemented. But as we have to reconstruct the road, you know, consider upgrading it and, you know, making these improvements.
I was talking about phasing, like priorities of what's more important or more effective. We're talking about one intersection that I think everybody can nod their head and maybe it's a waste of money.
Again, you know, the, the Indiana roundabout is more, here's the entrance to the town. You're coming into the town. Indiana's a good place to start slowing traffic up as they come down a hill. Rock Creek Parkway and McCaslin, like Rochelle mentioned, that's a good roundabout location because the flows are balanced. We have a lot of left turn movements. I mean, it's balanced, it's a good place to put. So those are two, to me, good examples of good roundabout locations. I'm not, you know, the ones on Rock Creek Parkway, you know, they're more, how do we get pedestrians across? Here's one solution, very expensive solution. So that to be better than, I think the board, I mean, they seem to be in favor of those, those concepts, whether they're going to put money behind it is something else.
Should we, I mean, should we have a discussion as a board? I mean, I think there are some obvious points that, I mean, we either agree or we don't agree. We want to try to put forth a recommendation as a, as a commission to the board. We want to try to do that tonight. We want to save it for the next meeting.
The purpose is tonight is what, what do we take out to the public? Do you want us to come back? Should we go out and have, you know, we have this presentation we can make to the public, try to get public input? And then, you know, we're going to come back to you after we've heard from the public. So.
This is our opportunity as a commission to put forth recommendations to, back to, to the staff to be incorporated. But, I mean, I know they could take our individual comments, but I don't think that's nearly as powerful as if we come back.
No, we should have a, we should have a collective message. We heard about what was statement that isn't correct. All those will, we'll probably incorporate some, some of those changes in the draft document that we go out. But the overall, you know, there's some major issues here with roundabouts and all that stuff. So we'd like, we're going out and if you want to make some changes there, you know, we can, we can do it at this point.
Can we start with, I mean, roundabouts might be easy. I think we're all probably pretty close on the roundabouts, I think, but.
Okay. You want to propose a statement?
Well, I, I mean, just in general, I think we're, we're open to the roundabouts potentially at, possibly at Rock Creek Parkway. I'm not sure where we're at. They're definitely not at the residential, what's that street? Christensen at all. I kind of question about whether that's useful up at 128th with that incline and whether or not that could happen.
That's really, that's super steep.
Yeah, I mean, but I, in some respects, we have to leave this to our transportation. I mean, I, I don't want to sit here and decide whether I'm technically competent enough to say whether or not we can put a roundabout at 128 from McCaslin. If we can, and our, and the people who do this say we can, that's a different sorts of, you know, I think we probably have to look at it from whether or not we believe it's a useful place for it to be and then trust that our traffic engineers are going to tell us whether it's reasonable to do it. I mean, I know, you know.
I don't think it'd have been.
128 is a steady road, right? Is 128 a steady road?
And that's not, you had not even proposed one there.
Didn't you have one proposed there?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, there's one now.
It wasn't on, yeah, it was, it was on the list.
It's on the list, okay. Yeah, so you got 128 McCaslin, you have Christensen, you have, well, you have the one at Colton, you have one at Rock Creek Parkway, one at the new town center entrance, and then one inside the town center, which I think that.
We also had a bunch on Rock Creek Parkway too, which.
Were there more on Rock Creek Parkway?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, let's start with McCaslin. I think it's probably.
I think we have the double one for the town center and then one at Rock Creek Parkway. And then that would be it.
I would advocate that we do the one in Indiana for the reasons that Alex.
Let's have one speaking on the microphone. I apologize. I would advocate that we consider the one on Indiana as well for the reason that Alex identified in that you're coming down that road and it, it basically announces to the pass-through motorists that you're, you're entering a community here.
That's the, at Indiana and Rock Creek.
Indiana, Indiana and McCaslin.
Oh, Indiana and McCaslin, okay. Good. Indiana and McCaslin.
So newer part of the other part of.
Okay.
My only concern with that one is it's, it kind of reminds me of Christensen because it's very little traffic coming out of Indiana. I mean, it is the first point, it is kind of the first point where you hit Rock Creek, but is it, are we trying to slow down traffic? Are we trying to manipulate or accommodate traffic flow and, or turns? And I just, I question, I've driven that route many times and I rarely see someone waiting to get out of Indiana. So I just, I really question the need for one there for that reason. I mean, let's, just a speed bump would be a little more favorable, maybe.
If you need anything. The question is, what's the need there?
Just anecdotally, I, I mean, I use that intersection at least, at least twice a day, probably six times a day. And it's, it's hard to get on to, to McCaslin from Indiana, especially with El Dorado K8 just down the street on Indiana during the morning commute. You have a lot of people dropping off their kids. They're, they're coming up Indiana, trying to get onto a Caslin. And what you have are motorists coming down the hill from 128, pretty full head of steam. I don't think very many motorists travel 45 miles an hour coming down that hill. And it really is quite hazardous. And that's, that's the one that, to me, from a safety perspective, in addition to the making the impression upon the motorists that you're entering a community here, I think we probably get the most bang for the buck. Plus, we already have a traffic control device at Rock Creek and McCaslin.
It would seem anywhere we might consider a light because of an issue like that, if we would, probably would consider a roundabout instead based on the way our town is going. And Alex, what's your feeling about the Indiana that, I mean, is that a high volume area? Are we getting a high pack like this?
You know, one, one direction you can give us is we can take some traffic counts. I don't have any in terms of turning movement counts. And if it would warrant a light in the future, maybe that, that would be a good location. And it's nowhere close to, to having the volumes that we want a traffic light. Maybe we should eliminate. I mean, that could be.
And is it actually traffic volumes that we want to measure? Or is it the inability for the people who live in that neighborhood to be able to get out in a reasonable amount of time? We've talked about this before. We tend, we tend to want to go to the numbers instead of going to what the people can live with, you know, because, I mean, it's the community's money, sorry. I mean, it's our money we're talking about spending and where do we spend those dollars? So as much has to be thought about from the community's desire or ability to.
Right, now I'd like to hear from the community down, down there, you know. Is this something they would like or not? And then I would like to do, collect more data on what, what the traffic projections and whether, how it fits in terms of our warrants for traffic lights and then our, we don't really have warrants for, for roundabouts. But I'd usually rule of thumb, if the side road traffic isn't more than 10% of the main road volumes, that's probably not a good location because you're, everybody has to slow up and you only have a very small amount, so 10%. So that's the kind of thing I want to collect.
Okay. So we call that back.
It sounds like we've got a, a large consensus on roundabouts are good, but it also sounds like we've got some varying opinions on where they're good and when they're good. So is that good enough to take back? Or should we perhaps maybe do straw polls on certain locations or, or volume? Maybe volume, to me, it might make more sense on a, as you were just speaking.
Or, or volume, maybe volume, to me, it might make more sense on a, as you were just speaking, to see some more numbers on, you know, do the volumes support roundabouts in a by-the-book sense? To me, that would make.
Again, we can go, we can go out, but when we return back to you, we can provide you that type of information, but going out to the public with, you know, some plan, you choose one now, and then we'll, we'll take it out.
Volumes don't address, don't address that problem.
True.
You've got a neighborhood street at the bottom of a hill, and I, I mean, I don't travel that as much as most, but I've come down that hill, and you do, you just think, oh, Christ, I'm doing 55, you don't even, it just doesn't even faze you, it's a wide, it's, there's plenty of room there, and it, you know, and I've said this before about McAsland and other roads, I mean, you look at Boulder, and things get narrowed, if you wanna get people to do 45, then you put the speed limit at 40, and you make it feel like you can't go faster than 45, you have to make it feel that way, or you're just gonna go, it's not that anybody intends to, you know, most of us, for the most part, don't want to go over the speed limit, a lot of times we just look down and you don't even realize it, 'cause you're on a road that you think feels like it's a 50 mile an hour road, and we all do five miles an hour over, five miles an hour over the speed limit, and if you know you're doing 55 past this neighborhood, and volumes aren't gonna warrant a light, what's gonna, what the issue is, is their ability to get out and feel safe about doing it, that's, and how do you, how do you do that? One of my questions was, is are we, are we talking about at some point narrowing that down and bringing the speed limit down, not only bringing the speed limit down, but, you know, setting the road so you're supposed to.
Now on the roadway, we have an issue, it's a very highly utilized bike corridor, so you have bike lanes that makes it wider.
Which makes it feel wider.
Makes it feel wider, so do you wanna take the bikes off, I don't think so.
No, absolutely not.
So, I mean, having those bike lanes there and being the wide open, I mean, it really, you know, it's easy to drive 50, 55 miles an hour through there, I mean, design speed on, other than some of the curves, it's really more of a 55 mile an hour design speed.
About 10% grade. Down that hill, I hate to tell you.
And I don't know whether, you know, roundabouts are gonna, you know, be a problem, because you come into it too fast and cause more problems, right?
That's what I'm saying, no.
And that's where I was coming from when I made the comments earlier about the safety aspects, because there are a lot of cyclists and runners that use that section of McAsland from the Colton Trailhead on up to 128 or up to Indiana, and then hop on the trail system at Indiana, and, I mean, I've done it, I think everybody's done it, you come off of 128 on McAsland, and just like you say, unless you're riding the brake, you know, before you know it, you're doing 60, and getting into people running and biking and everything else, I really think if we don't accomplish anything else, we ought to do something to, to inform motorists that, hey, you gotta slow it down, you're entering an area where you're gonna see people out there pushing baby joggers and everything else, we can't have it.
Okay.
If I can just add one, sort of expanding on that just a touch, I think that the potential, I'll call it potential roundabout at Indiana is also, would be a start, would force everybody to gear down from 128, it basically tells drivers that you're now getting into our community where roundabouts are gonna occur, because there'll be another one further up, and I think that just might be an effective way to get them to sort of like, get ready to change how they drive and negotiate the balance of superior as they go toward 36. Anyway, that's just my thought.
Could we just be vague and recommend that, you know, we are concerned about the approach of vehicles to Indiana coming down the hill from McAsland, and would like to see that addressed, whether, whether there's other calming measures or whether a circle or whatever, I mean, staff deems, but that we acknowledge that there's a concern there.
What about rumble strips, Stephen? That gets someone's attention, when you get rumble strips.
Or even, and these signs that tell you you're doing too fast, they work, I mean, you know, I see a lot of people respond to lights that come up, say, slow, you know, especially the ones that they have like on Cherryvale that turn red and blue like this out there, that gets your attention for a minute, and then you can see you're doing 43 miles an hour instead of 40, but, so, but, but something, I mean, just keep it vague that maybe that.
Well, maybe that's how we should voice it at this point, and talk about the ones that we're certain about, and then.
I imagine you'll go through a process where you'll say, all right, now is the time to build one, and which one do we build first? I mean, we, we obviously can't build all these, and I heard in the, your presentation at the town board that none of these were in the plan, at least for the next five years, now that could change, and you could add one, one or more in the next five years, but these are a long way out. So I think, what I'm hearing is, you know, the board's generally in support of them, there's just concerns about, are they the most equitable solutions at, at certain areas, and which should be the priorities?
Alex, what's the payback between the, so, the roundabouts and a traffic signalized section? I mean, there's gotta be a payback.
You mean the costs?
Yeah, there's a cost for.
Yeah, differential, you know, a typical traffic signal costs 250, 300,000 for just the single corner, you know, not the turn lanes, so turn lanes are in most of these, roundabout's gonna cost 600, 700, 800,000 dollars, so, I mean, it's pretty substantial, and again, on fatalities, it's a good price to pay, I mean, you know, fatal, sometimes when you use that, it's, you know, millions of dollars when you factor in the cost benefit of a vitality, injury accidents are several hundred thousand dollars when you take the cost benefit of society, so it doesn't take many of those, but it's, it's hard, in our community, we don't, we're not having those types of accidents, we haven't had a fatality in this, in this community, so it's not like, you know, there's, there's a lot of those accidents, but, you know, certainly injury accidents, we have a bunch of those.
I'd like to say it's a four to one ratio, but that's not really true either, we know that.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Even the signalized intersections.
Right, and so, to me, if we're gonna rebuild the road, that's the time when you're gonna look at it, 'cause you're gonna be tearing things up, you know, as you go along, so consider it then, and if it makes sense, again, go through the design process and the community input process and so forth.
Okay.
You know, the thing, if Jefferson Parkway, you know, ever, you know, comes forth, and they, and we wanna try to get some mitigation for the traffic that comes through, we have a, we have a plan, here's the thing, types of things we wanna implement to try and mitigate the impacts of Jefferson Parkway.
Okay. Have we given you enough on roundabouts? Okay.
Yeah, I'll give the full. How about Rock Creek Parkway, I mean, is there any, touched on whether, I mean, 'cause there are two more proposed, two more proposed roundabouts on Rock Creek Parkway, do we have any? It doesn't feel like a busy enough road to me to have more, more roundabouts.
Or look on to a major.
Yeah, I don't know, you guys left there more.
I don't think there's a need for it at this point in time, you know, into the foreseeable future, I mean, living near the one at 88th, I saw a need for that, and there were accidents there and all sorts of other problems there, but between that roundabout and going to the top up by Key Bank, I don't really see any, any need for it, at least not.
Is it pedestrian issues, and should we consider pedestrian signals? And I'm not in favor of flashing pedestrian signals, I'd much rather have just a red light to tell me to stop, you know, if a pedestrian wants to cross, but, you know.
That's my, that'd be my only objection with the one that's at 88th and Rock Creek, is that when you're going, I guess it's west on Rock Creek Parkway up toward Key Bank, and you wanna make a right onto 88, it's sort of a blind turn relative to being aware of pedestrians that are crossing near the, near the intersection, and oftentimes they'll go further down to.
Coleridge.
Yeah, the next, another crosswalk further down, which is actually safer.
Yep, Coleridge. I'd say on the Rock Creek Boulevard, probably the issues really surround pedestrian crossing, as opposed to making turns on those two we're talking about, so we should probably recommend alternative pedestrian mitigation issues.
Is everybody cool with that?
I like the language, too. Alternative mitigation.
Well, mitigate those pedestrians.
Alternative mitigation works for me, so, no, it's perfectly fine, I'm.
I would, I would agree with that, too, I think, I think the, the McAsland Boulevard roundabouts should be definitely a higher priority than, than the Rock Creek ones. Okay. How about some comments?
Electric vehicles?
I was gonna say the McAsland corridor.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's, why don't we have a collective opinion, if we can do so, on the McAsland, McAsland separation, other, other than roundabouts, just the other medians and so on.
I see a lot of cost there, I mean, there's some hillsides that have to be cut into, some soil problems that are happening above the development of Rock Creek Ranch that the road's falling in, I don't know if you've seen that, but, I have, and expanding it to a wider format's gonna be tough, not only it's a road there, I guess that's what I'm saying, I see it as a bigger project, don't you, Alex? Well, from Rock Creek Boulevard to Colton, let's just talk about, that's the.
Yeah, right, we're not gonna think, you know, around the ridge, the hill by the ridge, touch that, if we touch it, it'll slide down.
Slide down.
And it's, the real area is probably, you know, down by the, the roundabout, from the roundabout up to Christensen, that, that area has an opportunity to put some, some medians in.
Right.
You know, again, this is, you know, vision, I think we should carry forth, we can also, you know, leave it as it is, have an alternative, but carrying that vision forth, get, get the feedback from the public, and then have the board decide, I mean, there's gonna be a price tag that's associated with that, and it's really a board policy, they wanna spend that type of money on it, on, I think, 'cause we are reconstructing a good section of that road.
Would that help, I mean, does that, that help slow people down at all, I mean, creating an environment where it feels like you're in a more residential area through landscaping, better medians, I mean.
We think so.
That the idea there, sort of narrow it visually, even though the road might be getting.
Right, and you're putting, you can introduce some, some curves, gentle curves to, at appropriate design speed.
And those would be done when repairs are necessary, or, I mean, it's not something we would just go do, do that as it's appropriate to rebuild.
Right, we, there's only certain, you know, we looked at the whole corridor, where's the opportunity to do that, and we're limited, you know, with the terrain out there, and, you know, the, the hill, the slide, and the round, round the path, so there's only, only so much we could do, and we did as much curvy liners stuff that we could do.
I mean, if cost allows, I mean, if opportunity and cost allow doing landscaping to help mitigate traffic or create some traffic calming measures, I'd, I'd be in favor of, not necessarily just going out and doing it, but, you know, as opportunity.
Maybe up as far as the High Plains areas, I don't remember the contours of it, but it's a little farther up from Christensen.
From the roundabout to Christensen, or that's, that's the area that we can?
It's a little bit up, yeah, we're especially gonna do it around Christensen.
I agree that it would, it would look nice, it'd probably help with traffic flows, I'm just, I'm just trying to get my arms around, do we get a, what's the real benefit from it versus spending money on roundabouts and other things? It's, to me, it's, should be a lower priority perhaps than some of the safety enhancements.
Okay, I would agree with that.
So, hopefully that's some feedback.
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
I just have a question, Alex, on if, just looking at McAsland, and I think there are legitimate concerns by those who have commercial interests up here on the intersection with 36, I'm not one of them, but that we don't wanna, you know, we don't wanna discourage motorists from using McAsland to get to businesses up on 36. If we were to kinda go all in with all the traffic calming measures on McAsland, is it your view that you would actually be able to travel from 128 to 36 more, you know, in less time? Maybe not faster, but in less time, given your experience in Golden?
Maybe in less time at posted speed limit, in less time now, 'cause people, people are driving 60.
Right, right.
There, it won't be less than someone who's traveling 60.
Right.
But I think, you know, I think the traffic signal at Rock Creek Parkway, for example, I think people are slowing up there with a roundabout, I think you'd probably, the through traffic, you know, may not have to stop as much, you know, 'cause we have left turns there, so we're stopping traffic there, so I think they'll, they'll probably travel through there in less time, maybe not as fast if they have a green light, so I think that won't affect things.
So likewise, though, if we were to do a roundabout at Indiana and McAsland, as opposed to say, you do a study and determine that, yeah, we really should have a traffic light there, roundabout would be better, just in terms of getting motorists.
Yeah, not, not in particular location, we're gonna, we're not gonna slow, we're gonna slow traffic down, they're gonna have five second delay, plus the slowing down going through, it's gonna have minimal impact in terms of the whole trip that they're gonna be making. The other, the issue, the roundabout at the town center, I think will facilitate business in the town center, 'cause it'll be easier getting and out of the town center, and then it'll pull economic development and development there, because it'll be easier to get in and out than, than a traffic signal, delays would be less.
All right, thank you. Good. Did you have a, something, Beth?
Well, I was just thinking, I was thinking, and I mentioned a bit, for the planning commission here, to think a little bit about, about process here in terms of, of how you may want to kind of collect your thoughts about the plan, give to Alex and his team, whether we wanna maybe continue another meeting and continue to chew on this a little bit. I mean, there's a lot of explanation that's in this plan as well, that's been discussed here tonight, maybe you might wanna think about whether you wanna have a bit more organized approach in terms of suggestions you wanna give to Alex and his team before they continue to, you know, implement, continue with, you know, their process, and then there may be a point in the process where, I think it's been suggested that planning commission come back, or the team come back with some public input that, you know, a revised plan that, that shows public input as well as stuff that you've given to them, and we do that prior than before it starts to get more in a formal position in front of the board and system, I mean, you may wanna think about the processes, how you might wanna be involved. So, I would just throw that into the discussion tonight, if you think, if you don't, if you think you can get through the plan, give them the suggestions you need tonight, you know, that's fine.
Okay.
I mean, you know, if, 'cause there's a lot of questions here, and then, the team here is here to answer, too, I mean, there's a lot of technical stuff that, I think there's been a lot of learning going on here, and.
Okay, you know, I could come back at a second meeting, I know Rochelle had a number of questions, and we could, you know, attempt to address the ones that we didn't address tonight, and if you have any others to communicate to us, we could, you know, try to do our best to incorporate that, and hearing this discussion, come back with some revisions to the document that addressed a lot of the comments that we were tonight.
Okay.
I'd throw that out to you, so.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, I don't know, I think it would, the reason I brought it up, I think it'd be helpful.
Okay.
It's getting late.
Yeah, we're approaching 10 o'clock here, so, yeah, I think we should probably continue this to, to the next meeting, and maybe each, you know, each person could kind of come back with a list of kind of their key items, and we could try to collate that into, you know, some kind of formal statement, I think it'd be helpful to, for all of us to review the minutes, and there's a lot said here tonight, so I think it'd be useful to review all of that.
My question is, can we, fellas, do the minutes get beat down before the next meeting?
We will try to get them down, it's reality.
Could we at least maybe get our, the things that we've at least agreed upon so far, you know, summarize, you know, so that we have that, so we know where we're at at this point? I mean, necessarily having every comment that everybody made is probably not nearly as important as what we've already come to consensus on.
Are you saying to do that here tonight?
No, no, just let, let these guys summarize, you know, from our discussions, Wes.
Okay.
Does that seem reasonable?
Is that, is that good?
All right.
So, is that for the second meeting in December, December eighteenth? And how many people would be able to make that because of the holidays?
I'm good.
Okay. Okay, then let's, let's continue this topic until that meeting, and would it also be advisable to continue the, the public hearing on the election season item to?
Well, do you want to-
Knock that out?
That's, that's entirely up to you, it's not a public hearing. It's, um, which the town board is looking for, well, it's chapter sixteen item, and it's a changed, it's an ordinance change to the town code, and currently, we, the Town Superior allows temporary signage in the public right-of-way only during election season. And temporary signage doesn't just apply to campaign signs, but it could apply to any other temporary type of sign. And that's, they do not need a permit, they can just place those signs in public right-of-way. As this year, the twenty-twelve election came up, town board discussed that maybe the, the length of time of our definition of election season, which is only thirty days, doesn't allow for more time for people to consider candidates, because of mail-in ballots and things like that, so they will, they asked us to bring to you a suggested time, extended time for election season. So, currently, it's thirty days, and the proposal is sixty days, and that's how the ordinance is drafted, that's in your packet.
Okay. And the other piece of this, as I understand it, is that we could, if we so choose, discuss the merits of having signs in the public right-of-way, period.
Certainly.
Because in the packet, it was pointed out that most other communities do not allow election signs or other signs in the public right-of-way.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and it's, it's not a rush, if that's something that you would like to continue to another time, that's fine, too.
Why don't we just, we'll maybe go down the, or just go by whoever has comments, and kind of see where the discussion goes, and if we're getting very heated in the discussions here in the next ten, eight or ten minutes, maybe we'll continue it, but maybe we can knock this out quickly, who knows?
Okay.
I could make a statement, I-
Commissioner Rick.
I'll start this. Where sixty days come from, and how does sixty, sixty days, yeah, cover it, because we just had a major election.
Right.
And it went a lot longer than sixty days, like, yeah. So, that's number one, I would say, as somebody to consider that. Number two, I'd say, I agree that, you know, this is one of the few communities that does have, to have that ability to put signs in public right-aways, but then also, we had a whole, let me add another issue with homeowners associations and campaign signs on private property, and people were taking them down. So, I, I would say, that's an issue. I, I think even a bigger issue. So, I would ask somebody to consider signage in its totality.
Okay.
There are people that had homes and homeowners association didn't even know the rules, so that was, that was a problem, too. So, somebody was running around, just arbitrarily picking sound, signs out of people's front yards that had known about it, and the campaigns didn't know about it, the political campaigns didn't either, and it certainly is something that'd be nice, it's kind of like the airspace over Rock Creek.
So, are you in favor of no signs in public right-of-way?
I'd kind of say, if we're gonna do it, we give one or the other, you know?
Okay.
Either do it, get on board, or just say we're different, or we don't do it at all.
Well, we allow it now, I mean-
Yes.
I mean, it's just a question of, because of the mail-in ballots, and the fact that you can vote much earlier, how much earlier can you vote?
Phyllis, can you help me out here?
This year, the election was November sixth, and the mail-in ballots went out on the week of October fourteenth, which is about forty-five days.
Okay, so, and right now, we have thirty days, so we could kind of add in fifteen days.
So, we add fifteen.
But there's, there's a lot of campaigning before that.
Yes.
I guarantee you.
Oh, there is.
That's different.
That's right.
No, I mean, signs are going up.
But sixty days has some merit, I mean-
That's not a couple of people, not in public.
Well, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, my opinion is-
Versus if I wanna put it in my yard all year round, you know, I could do that. My HOA, I don't have one, so I don't, so I don't grow trees.
Well, some people, well, some people, what they're doing is putting it in front of the window, so is that any better than having one in the front?
Well, again, but that, if that falls under HOA, that's different.
These were on ballot.
Well, we can't, we can't discuss HOA anymore.
Yeah, it's not our, it's not, that's not our domain.
Yes.
So, going back to the chronological order of this, the candidates had to declare their candidacy by the, August twenty-seventh. The first time that the mail-in ballots went out was October fifteenth, so the thirty days would have been October sixth. If you do stay with the thirty days, or go to forty-five days, that would be the middle of September. So, they would have a couple of weeks, maybe three weeks, in there between the time they submitted their candidacy, and then when the signs could go up, it was forty-five days. So, does that make any sense at all, this late hour?
And that's what we're talking about primarily, is our, is our, is our local ballot, I mean, that's the majority of the signs.
I'd say extend it to forty-five days, maybe not the full sixty, the forty-five would seem to bracket what the proposal is about. It, it's kind of around the mail-in ballot cycle, so back it up by fifteen days.
Okay.
Other, other opinions?
That would be my, my suggestion, it's around the forty-five, but I don't agree with this.
Forty-five?
Yeah, I'm coming up.
Forty-five? Good. I would agree with forty-five as well, however, I would, if we were to expand this, and maybe this is not the night or the forum to do it, but I would be in favor of, of not having campaign signs in, in public spaces, or in, in public right-of-way, because it, what the code also allows is anyone can put signs during election season that meets that size criteria, so-
But did we see any?
We didn't, well, there's-
You got a few.
Joe's painting, and this, that, so, they're all, they're all allowed, and, and I think if it were widely known that they were allowed, you'd probably see a lot more, and I think there's plenty of opportunities, this is just my opinion, but there's plenty of yards that have opportunities to place signs in. Do we need to see them every ten feet of our drive out of this community? I don't, I don't think we do.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I, I kind of disagree, I mean, I, you know, it's, it's so, it's such a low-budget campaign process that we, you know, that, 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 that people who are running for the board have, I mean, they're, they're not spending a lot of money, and so getting any way to give them an opportunity to get their name in front of people so that they can see it, to me, feels reasonable, and I think it's, I don't know, I mean, it's, it's, I don't think they're eyesores, I mean, I think it's just, you know you're in the middle of election season, and, you know, I don't know, I, I think it's, it's a, it's a great opportunity to allow the candidates to have a way to get their name out there. If you wanna make a motion on this, then we can't, we can't really address that today, right?
Let's just go with the forty-five day thing.
So, I'll make a, I'll move to recommend the Superior Town Board approve the ordinance regarding changes to chapter sixteen, notification of property owners for, for concept plan reviews from thirty days to forty-five days prior to election day, so Alex speaks.
I believe that's the one.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner McCool, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ricker. All those in favor, or any discussion? Okay, yeah, all those in favor? Oppose, passes unanimous? Okay, got through that one, ten minutes. Want to go through the work plan?
Sure, if you want to, real quick, quickly, first of all, thank you for all of your hard work in twenty-twelve. We put a lot on your plate with respect to the comprehensive plan, which has blossomed into adding the transportation plan, which, we add that here, as well as the town center process, the plan development process and zoning, and thank you for your presence and your input at all of our public meetings and the joint town board meetings. So, got to take those off the plate for twenty-thirteen, and I just kind of redlined it, the plan as part of your packet, so you have an idea of what, what happened last year or this current year, and Fred, you, you had a couple of comments, do you wanna?
Well, I, you know, I, I was looking at the list, and I felt you could probably add one, which would be review and comment on proposed development projects and amendments. And then, I think we'll be doing a question, I think we, there has been some discussion amongst the staff that we should just clean up to the code, there's some issues in there that we feel we fixed. A lot of it's kind of miniscule, but we still, to clarify a couple of things, but there's more than, there's more than just a couple, there's a series of little ones throughout the whole thing. So, we might think about doing that, if the board wants us to do that, but I think that's our suggestion to the board, that we spend a little time doing that. So, I added that at the bottom. That's all I could come up with, but you all might have some ideas, or things that you might wanna have discussed or add to the list.
Anyone have anything? I thought it was a pretty complete list, pretty good list.
I can ask me, we'll get together if anybody has any ideas.
Sounds good.
I can add, oh, I'll add it to the agenda.
Okay.
So, we have the transportation plan and the work plan on the agenda for December eighteenth.
Okay, sounds good. Any final announcements?
No, we do have an applicant who would like to do a walk-up ATM that town manager would like to bring through the formal process, planning commission and town board, and they were supposed to submit by yesterday, and they didn't, so we probably won't hear from them before January fifteenth, which is, we're guessing will be the first twenty-thirteen planning commission meeting. Other than that, we have our continued public hearing on the comprehensive plan on December tenth. That was abruptly ended because we had power outage, but it allowed us to tweak what, what we had from the input and comments, and gives us one more opportunity to vet that process also. So, if you wanna join us on Monday, we'll see you there.
Okay.
Yeah, I have, and I wanna make sure, Commissioner McCool, you, you, were you asking that we maybe put together a couple of things that were talked about here, on the transportation plan, sort of, kind of like where we left off in terms of suggestions, is that what you were getting at?
Yes, yeah.
Before the next meeting?
I have a couple of, I have a list I've made, I can draft something up and send it to you to take a look at before-
That'd be good.
-the meeting, if you want to.
I don't think, no, that needs to be officially part of the agenda, I think we all have it just so we can continue our conversation and agree, you know, maybe even, we could, in that forum, just revisit them real quickly and make sure we're all still in the same place at that point.
Right, yeah. Okay, I just wanted to clear that out a little quick.
We'll mash all our notes together. Okay?
Thank you.
And then, fellas, maybe the minutes will be there, too.
Very well, could be, maybe it's two weeks, so we will do our best to get them done.
Okay. All right, very good, we're adjourned. Thanks for sticking with.